Hello.
Good evening. I will now like to call to order this meeting. City Attorney. City Attorney, can you please let us know the conclusion of the closed session items?
Sure, thank you. There were three items on the closed session agenda. Item number one, the city council gave direction to its real property negotiators. And items two and three, the city council received a report and gave direction to its labor negotiators. And that ends the closed session report.
Okay, thank you. Well, the special city council meeting is now adjourned. Before I begin the regular city council meeting, I would like to remind members of the public of the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code, Sections 2105 and 2106. Copies of these rules are available in the back of the room if anybody needs them. The meeting rules prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting unless addressing the city council or entering or leaving the council chambers. All persons in the audience shall remain seated. No person shall stand or sit in the aisles or along the walls, and no person shall block the doorways. All demonstrations, including cheering, yelling, whistling, hand clapping, and foot stomping, is prohibited. No placards, signs, posters, packages, bundles, suitcases, or large objects which disturb or impede the orderly conduct of the meeting shall be brought into the council chambers. All speakers who wish to address members of the city council or staff must do so through the mayor. Members of the audience shall respect the rights of others and shall not create noise or disturbance when others are addressing the city council. Speakers, please, shall not yell, scream, or use foul language during their comments. Photography, audio, or videotaping may be taken from any seat in the council chambers or the back of the room. No videotaping will be allowed from the side or middle aisles or from the front of the council chambers. The mayor may ask the city manager to remove from the council chambers any person who, after fair warning, violates any provisions of the Downey Municipal Code. Any person removed shall be excluded from further attendance on the item or matter pending before the council at the time of the removal. The person removed may reenter the meeting upon completion of said item or matter. Any person removed a second time for violating the meeting rules will be excluded from further attendance at that meeting. In order to ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the city council, the city of Downey will continue to follow Government's Code, Section 54954.3B2, and provide non-English speakers double the allotted time to make their public comments utilizing a translator. All other speakers will be given the allotted three minute speaking time as established by the Downey Municipal Code unless modified by the mayor. I remind everyone that per the LA County's health order, masks are now required to be worn at all times while indoors. Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Present.
Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Present.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Present.
And Mayor Frometta?
Present. I will now like to call Father Sam Ward from St. Raymond's Catholic Church to the podium to lead us in the invocation. And if you can, please stand.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to introduce myself, Father Sam Ward. Since July 1st, I'm the new pastor at St. Raymond's, succeeding Father John Higgins, who's remaining in residence with us, enjoying his retirement. He can be as active or inactive as he wants, but he's staying active in the parish. I've just jumped the 710. My first assignment as a priest was at St. Emeleus in Lindwood, and I was pastor previously at St. Helen's in Southgate. So now I've come east of the 710, and I've been chaplain my whole eighteen years a priest at St. Patias, at St. Matthias High School, formerly St. Matthias. So it's great to be here in the city of Downey and be able to address you and pray for you and to pray with Let us pray. Lord God, may everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help, so that all our prayers and works may begin in you and by you be happily ended. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. We pray for our nation, our state, our county, and our city, in a special way for the members of the Downey City Council, and all of our elected officials and city officials, police officers, firefighters, first responders, and all the citizens residents of this great city, especially those who are entrusted to guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We make all these prayers in your holy name, Christ our Lord. Amen. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Father Ward. We appreciated you being here with us tonight. Thank you. I will now like to call Chief Milligan to lead us in the flag salute.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd invite you all to stand and please place the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I would like to begin... Is my microphone on? For some reason, I don't... It doesn't seem on. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I would like to begin with council member announcements and requests for future agenda items, conference and meeting reports. And I would like to start to my left, Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to recognize my planning commissioner, I believe he's in the audience, Borasio Ortiz Jr. Thank you for being here, sir. Dorothy not here? Okay. So I had the opportunity to attend the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo. It's an opportunity for city council members from all... How many is it? Mayor Protem, four hundred and... How many cities? Four hundred and seventy-nine cities were represented at the Capitol, our beautiful Capitol, had an opportunity to, first and foremost, network and learn from other council members as to how they're handling specific issues. One big issue that was discussed in a couple of workshops that I had, that I attended, was a workshop on exploring the legalization of commercial cannabis. Look, in Downey, I think it's well known, we don't do the three Ps. The three Ps are pot, porn, and porn. Many of us wanted to stay that way, but it just seems like many cities are considering cannabis as a tax basis. We're fortunate that we don't need the money that much. But, look, alcohol and cannabis seems to be the American way nowadays, so sooner or later, I think we're gonna have to consider it. I'm not saying when or how, but I wanted to report back on that. I also had an opportunity to attend a workshop on policy and legal considerations and serving the unsheltered. You know, there's this attitude that many of us have about not in my backyard. And if we're really going to be serious about trying to get people services who are unsheltered, the first thing we're gonna have to figure out is housing for them. The biggest service that we could provide to the homeless population is housing. So they presented some good suggestions on that. And the last one that I attended was also, was on social media and how to engage our residents through social media, right? It seems to be the future. So those were informative workshops. Thank you for the opportunity to attend. For future agenda items, I am concerned that our Sister Cities organization appears to need some assistance. So for future agenda, if we can have a report on how the city can better engage with our Sister Cities organization, I don't know what the partnership would look like. In talking to our neighbors in Pico Rivera, they actually went to the extent of forming their own commission, where each council member, they appoint a member to the Sister City Commission, and they've taken it into the fold of the city. So I would just like to see what the options are or how we can assist our Sister Cities organization in bringing back the luster it used to have. I know we have Sister Cities with Oaxaca, Encenada, and I'm sure Mr. Our former mayor, Mr. Gero, in Ireland. What's the name of our... Thank you. Well, there you go. Those are our three, right? So I would like to reestablish relationships with those cities and, or at least find out if we have relationships and what the status is of those relationships. I would also like a status update, a report on our Neighborhood Watch program as we get back to normalcy, even though, you know, we do have the various variants that we're dealing with. If I remember correctly, most of our meetings would usually be like outdoors, in somebody's backyard. I would like to see if we're getting back to the business of that. I don't know where we're at with that, but if we can have a report on that. So those two future agenda items, Sister Cities and Neighborhood Watch, please. And the last thing was, I actually attended one other conference, and that's the Contract Cities Conference. That one was in Indian Wells. Even though we have our own police and fire department, so we are basically an independent city, we still have various contracts with different vendors. And this was a conference, an opportunity for us to meet some of the vendors and hear about additional services that are out there. Energy efficiency seems to be a big thing. There's various vendors who want to meet with us about being more efficient. I like to think we're already ahead of the curve. As you may know, here in Downey, we're starting to mobilize solar panel installation in some of our facilities. I did have an opportunity to present on the Alternative to Incarceration program that's being administered by the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors, when it comes to the area of criminal justice reform, beginning in 2015, developed an Office of Diversion and Reentry. And I want to be clear that this ATI program applies to basically misdemeanors. So it's very important that when it comes to public safety, we distinguish between those who are dangerous. And the Penal Code defines people who are dangerous, violent or serious, under 1192.7 of the Penal Code. Those people are defined for us because of the nature of the crimes. But in the area of misdemeanors and quality of life issues, if you will, the Board of Supervisor wants us to get away from jails. They have a Care First, Jails Last campaign. Then they developed the Alternative to Incarceration campaign and came up with Measure J, which the voters passed, which takes 10% of the general fund away from law enforcement agencies such as District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department. And that 10% is supposed to be reallocated to provide the alternatives to incarceration, again, for non-dangerous people. Sometimes in the rhetoric, people just go out and say that the DA and the sheriff are just letting everybody out, and that's just not true. So, yeah, I just want to report back on Contract Cities and the League of Cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Councilmember Ashton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. Good to see everyone. Since we're calling out people, my Parks and Rec Commissioner, Jeanne Wood, is in the audience. Jeanne, if you can wave to everybody. Thank you. All right. So I also had the opportunity to attend a couple of conferences during our time between council meetings. So I'll start off with the Contract Cities Conference, which was about a week and a half ago, out in Indian Wells. Watched the Councilmember Trujillo give an excellent presentation on the alternatives to incarceration. I know it's a tough gig to get up and speak in front of people, and you did a really good job in presenting your information. So thank you for representing the city in that way. Also, had a... They had a session on homelessness and mental health. And I think this is kind of an issue that's really been, obviously, the homelessness part. And I think we've been trying to do as much as we can on the mental health side of it all. It kind of talked a lot about what LA County Sheriff's is doing or are doing with, in regards to assisting those that are homeless and not making it more of a punitive thing, but more of a let's-get-you-assistance type of thing. And it was kind of just powerful when they're kind of talking about these certain programs that the sheriffs have been using, how successful they've been in clearing out encampments, but not just throwing people somewhere else, getting those people help and doing it in a way where it's not about, you know, we're here to punish you, but more about, we're here to help you. And I know we have a couple of people that go out on our patrols that are part of, that have training in dealing with mental health issues to assist our officers with that. And it would just be good to see if there's stuff that we could do to partner up with whatever the county is doing, to make sure that our folks have the best information, the best tools available to help with this situation. And, you know, and maybe there's something they can learn from how we're doing certain things, too. So, you know, I would like to be able to see if there's a way, Chief Milligan, if we can reach out to the LA County Sheriff's and their hero team and see if there's a way we can kind of work on getting training for our officers as well and working together to kind of handle the situation in a humane way. So that was probably, probably out of all the sessions at that conference, that was probably the most powerful one for me. I appreciate having the opportunity to attend on that one. The other conference we all, or most of us attended, was the Cal Cities Conference up in Sacramento. And a couple of sessions that happened there. So I also attended the Cannabis Myths and, I forget the title of it, but it was cannabis. And so one of the speakers was the former mayor of Bellflower, Juan Garza. And he really kind of laid into what Bellflower did as far as adopting, you know, the cannabis, allowing cannabis sales in their city. And to the tune of, they're making now about $2.5 to $3 million a year just on that. Kind of a, you know, I mean, like, as much as I want to say, oh, yeah, we don't need the money, I mean, it's $2 to $3 million. I mean, there's a couple of projects we could do for that. But it was just an interesting topic, the hearing from him and then City in Orange County, who's doing a similar path to cannabis as well. So just an interesting topic. Also, being there, I and our Madam Mayor Protem, Blanc Pacheco, we were also awarded with the Cal Cities Torch Level Three. And so basically, this is a program that Cal Cities has for their elected officials to not only just learn, but use what you're learning in as much as possible in your communities. And so, you know, we both went through Torch Level One and Torch Level Two, which required three years and five years with the council service, plus attending certain classes. And then earning the Level Three is a lot harder because it requires you to actually kind of involve yourself in leadership roles throughout the community you serve. And so it was an honor for myself personally, and I'll let Madam Mayor Protem talk about her experiences with the Torch program. But for me, it was just very... It was kind of a, you know, as I start looking at the last year and three months of my council term, it was just kind of like, you know, I could look back and kind of see what I was able to accomplish and things that have happened in the city and just take that moment of reflection, realize that things have gone pretty well, even though I might not have been on the right side of whatever vote. But as a whole, I'd like to think that we've moved the city in the right direction. With that, I also attended one other event on Sunday after late afternoon. So our CERT program and our emergency coordinator, Radke Klock, they had a CERT training for residents in the city to actually learn skills needed for basic emergency services. And they held that at the Fire Station Number One for the entire weekend. I had the opportunity to attend their graduation ceremony for those, I think it was about 10 people that were part of the program this time. And the amount of work that they have to do to go through that program was quite a bit. I mean, a lot of training on just medical issues, how to treat certain things, all the way down to their final task was a search and rescue of a building and what to do with people as they come across them during that training, you know, whether they're, you know, slightly injured, severely injured, already deceased, and knowing how to handle those types of situations. And just a big thank you to Radke and the CERT team. Thank you, Chief, for making sure that we keep those programs going. And I know as more openings come up for people to, who want to go through this program, we'll make sure that we let the community know to... Because I find the training invaluable. It's good to realize that we have people in our community that, you know, have these skills. So in the event of an emergency, like, I mean, we had a quake a week and a half ago, and it was a nice little jolt, but not the big one. But in the event of the big one, we're going to be relying a lot on these community members who've gone through this training to assist their neighbors in whatever medical emergencies might be occurring due to whatever event that may be. So it's good to have this program, and I appreciate having the opportunity to just to be there and say my heartfelt thank you for that. With that, I've talked for quite too long, so I will go ahead and end my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashton. To my far right, Councilmember Alvarez.
Hi, good evening, community. I will keep my comments brief. First, I want to thank you for attending, especially to those that it's the first time in here. Thank you for joining us. Second, I wanted to report that I attend to League of California Cities. I learned a little bit of how to confront hate speech, and I learned from experts in law enforcement rights and how to address hate group affiliation and speech, and legal culture and social complicity, and how stragglions apply for the cities to have inclusiveness with the LGBTQ+ community. We had Richard Montañez, creator of the flaming hot Cheetos. He was pretty much saying his story and how he became the owner of Cheetos as well. We had a Bonnie St. John's Paralympic Ski Medalist, and know how their experience can be used for our personal life and as work in, to be a councilwoman, a better councilwoman. I wish we could have attended those classes. There's a lot to cover. Unfortunately, all these classes were at the same time, so we had to choose and pick. Hopefully, we have that in the future so we can get more information. And I attend to Contract Cities in Indian Wells, and I learned as well about Disney, the happiest place in the world. And I'm saying all this because all my colleagues already said a lot of what we went together. So I wanted to say that with this story, it's a way that we can actually see our side of our lives sometimes, because the creator of Oswald the Lucky Rabbit, it's now Disney, Mickey Mouse. So the way that he came all the way to here, it was really curious. The alternatives to... So it was presented by Mario, the alternatives of incarceration. I really liked the way that they actually spoke about it. The Vice Major of Long Beach, my colleague Mario, also the co-executive director of La Defensa, she was there. She was talking about how to, we can basically, instead of having these misdemeanors, being incarcerated, having other options. I learned how can our cities can improve, and I will come with some ideas with our city managers and council. And also, I wanted to say that we have great news. LA County Board of Supervisors attended the County Wildlife Eviction Voratorium for tenants until January 31st of 2022. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Protem?
Thank you, and welcome, everyone, to our council meeting. It's always a pleasure to see our community attend our meetings and to be engaged in your local government. Some people that I did want to recognize, in attendance, we have former Mayor Mario Guerra. We also have Downey Chamber Executive, Michael Calvert. Also, Parks and Rec Commissioner, Henry Secha. And we also have a very special guest, Ivan Sulek from Supervisor Han's office. So we have been very busy the last several weeks. As you heard, we attended two conferences since our last city council meeting. And one of those conferences that we all attended, as you heard, was Contract Cities over in Indian Wells. And there was a wide variety of sessions that we attended. A lot of them had to do with housing and public safety. We got updates from LA County Sheriff and LA County Fire, which LA County Fire is the fifth busiest fire department in the nation. We also... But of course, I have to say, Downey Fire is the best fire department. But also, one of the sessions that Councilmember Ashton touched upon was this discussion about a program called HOST, which stands for Homeless Outreach Services Team. And I talked to Lieutenant Diedrich, and he was explaining to me that they travel everywhere throughout the county, and they also partner up with those cities that have their own police department. I did have a one-on-one conversation with him, and he explained to me that he does work with our police department. But I want to see if there's anything else that we can do to team up with HOST, because he did tell me that the services that will be provided to our cities, to our city, would be free of charge. So I don't have his contact information, but I know Ivan Sulek has his contact information. I gave him my business card, but he didn't have one on hand. So if we could see if maybe we could reach out to him and see how they can help our city with dealing with homeless encampments in certain areas in our city. Okay. Thank you. And he did tell me that he does work with our police department, and he enjoys working with our police department. Also, like was mentioned, we all attended, or the majority of our council attended Sacramento for the League of California Cities. There were great sessions that were offered. Like Councilmember Ashton had mentioned, we have been very, so involved in the League of California Cities that we obtained the Torch Level Three program. So my involvement with Cal Cities is, I'm currently on the State Board for Cal Cities. I'm also the immediate past president for the LA Division, and I was just elected to be second Vice President for the Mayor's and Council Department. So I've been extremely involved with the League of California Cities because of the educational opportunities that they provide to elected officials and because of the advocacy efforts that they provide. This is an organization, like was mentioned, that has 478-member cities. And to keep it in perspective, we have 482 cities in the state of California. So there's only three cities that are not members, and I still need to search which cities there were, because Councilmember Ashton had asked me about that. But there are smaller cities, but the majority of cities are involved with Cal Cities. And you'll hear Cal Cities, League of California Cities, And you'll hear CAL Cities, League of California Cities, the names being used. Previously, the name League was used as like the smaller, I guess, instead of League of California Cities. But with rebranding, the name has now changed to CAL Cities. I do want to mention that one of the resolutions that we took on in CAL Cities has to do with railroad tracks. And it's, the resolution would ask for CAL Cities to work with our legislators to provide funding and resources to assist cities with their railroad right-of-way areas to deal with issues like illegal dumping, security, graffiti, and homeless encampments, which is an issue that we're having in the southeast area in a lot of cities throughout the state. So this resolution was a resolution that easily passed. And like I mentioned, another change was the Bylaws Amendments that also passed, changing again League to now CAL Cities. So if you hear us say CAL Cities, you know it has to do with the League of California Cities. But it's a pleasure that I got recognized during the same time that Councilmember Ashton got recognized, because we also received the Level 2 Torch Program at the same time, about two years ago. So it was truly a pleasure, and I just want to say congratulations to Councilmember Ashton. An upcoming event that I did want to mention is Gangs Out of Downey. They are having a golf tournament, the Ricky Galvez Golf Tournament, and this will be next Monday at the Rio Hondo Golf Course. And you can always reach out to me, and I will always reach out to Hector Sosa, who's the president. Also, former mayor Mario Guerra is on Gangs Out of Downey. So if you have any questions, want to be involved in the golf tournament, you can see him or you can see myself. And that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and good evening again, everybody. I will keep my comments short. Many of the issues that I wanted to bring up in terms of my comments and my participation with Contract Cities have already been stated. I also want to recognize the members of the audience. Former mayor Mario Guerra, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, Michael Calvert, the commissioners, Henry Seja, and I don't know if, who else do I see? Jeannie Wood, thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you again for joining us. I, since I got elected, I say every single time that strong communities are engaged communities. And we realize that we all lead very busy lives. But when you voice your concerns and your opinions to your local governments, you make us stronger. And I think this has been the case with the city of Downey. So I just want to say thank you for joining us tonight. We have, we had a very busy couple of weeks, as I've indicated. Contract Cities, great sessions and good opportunity to interact with other mayors from other cities as well and to find out what it is they are doing with the mandates from our state government. It was interesting, because we met on the heels of the law that Governor Newsom signed SB 9. And many of your elected officials, not just here on this dais, but the cities around us, had actually lobbied against. And again, this is changing the zoning and building housing. And we believe that we have a shortage of housing that we need to address, but we need to do it strategically. And once again, that was a big topic of discussion during that conference. We also, I also had the opportunity to attend the Celebration of Life for our former mayor Meredith Perkins, who passed away earlier this year. And I left Contract Cities early to be able to attend here at home in Downey, something that was really important to us. And that was celebrating a man whose life made a huge impact to this community. I will speak a little bit more about his life, and we'll ask former mayor Mario Guerra to join me later in the program as we give him an award. We also had an opportunity to be on a phone call with Governor Newsom's office, regional mayors convening to discuss areas and issues of concern in Southern California. And this was during the time that CAL Cities was going on. I was not able to attend due to prior job commitments. And one of the things that was evident during the call with mayors from Lakewood and surrounding cities is, once again, the disappointment in the passage of Senate Bill 9 that the governor could have vetoed. That took away local control for us, local municipalities. And as we attend, you heard from my council colleagues, we are always proposing ways to maintain local control. Local control matters to all of us, and especially to our residents. And when you ask what is happening to our cities and why it is certain things are being done the way they are, a lot of times, our residents look to us to find answers. And we don't have the answers, because the state has taken the control from us. We spoke about SB 9. We also spoke about the homelessness situation that we're all dealing with. And we also spoke about the increased debris and homeless encampments and trash in and out of freeway exits. And as you know, Downey is right in the middle of several freeways. To that end, I would like to ask our city staff to reach out to Caltrans and really continue to coordinate cleanups for encampments in all of the freeway entrances and exits. That continues to be a problem. We also wanted, we spoke about Project Roomkey. There will be a webinar September 30th about ways that cities can implement Project Roomkey in their communities. And I think this is something worth looking at. I would like us to take a look at that. The mayor of Lakewood and I discussed co-hosting a regional mayor summit and reaching out to the office of the governor and inviting him to the city of Downey. The city of Downey, our Columbia Memorial Space Center, to discuss many of the issues that our regional communities are worried about. And that is homelessness, that is the affordable housing. The Senate Bill 9 has been a very hot topic. Again, it's a bit ironic. Many of the same individuals that have pushed for affordable housing and wanted that were against this Senate bill because of what it means to communities. It decimates neighborhoods and single-family areas. And so I would like the staff to look into that. The mayor of Lakewood and I have spoken, and we would like to have a regional mayor summit coming up in the next few weeks. We've also spoken with the office of Governor Newsom, and they are interested in moving forward with that. A couple of things that I would like also staff to look into is we continue to see, and I know, I want to say thank you to Delfino, and I want to say thank you to Aldo. We continue to see a lot of illegal dumping. And I know that I've been harping on this for the past year since I first brought this issue September 30th of last, or September 20th of last year. I see a lot of furniture along different streets. And I know that we have increased our code enforcement. We've increased CalNet. And as of the second or third quarter, we've had, we have picked up 280 tons of materials. And, but we must continue. We must continue to keep that enforcement. I also see a lot of vehicles parked on lawns. And again, this is, as community residents, we all pay a high cost for living here. And I think we've all spoken about how much we appreciate a clean city and a city that has certain ways of living. I don't want to see vehicles on lawns and certainly trash and debris. And I know it's a tough battle, and I just want to say thank you for the continuing enforcement on that. I also want to say thank you to our police chief and our police department for the speed enforcement. We saw, I think, everybody who is on social media and a couple of particular pages regarding Crime Watch, some pretty terrible accidents in the last few days. And again, if I'm not mistaken, these were due to speed. We cannot have a safe community if we continue with individuals that are violating our laws in terms of speed. And if we can continue with that speed enforcement, and I know that in some of the residential neighborhoods, that is also a problem. And I know that we probably don't have the staff to be everywhere at all times, but we must continue to have those DUI checkpoints on certain weekends and also along the major thoroughfares for speed. I think that's really important. All of this, again, thank you. I have to tell you, I'm a little bit off this evening, and I have to tell you why. My daughter's in the hospital, and I'm here because I love my city. I love this community, and there is important business that we need to take care of. But at this very moment, she has been, there's a CT scan that was done, and we're waiting for the surgeon. And I will have to leave the meeting sooner than anticipated. But it is important for me to conduct the people's business. That's what I was elected to do. And if I seem a little off, that is the reason why. Thank you for your understanding. There's a couple of things that I do want to mention. Madam Mayor Pro Tem did mention the Gangs Out of Downey Ricky Galvez Golf Tournament. I am also involved in Gangs Out of Downey. That golf tournament is October 4th, Monday. And Havana Nights, it is scheduled for October 7th, that's a Thursday. We also have the State of the City, and I will be presiding over that. That is Tuesday, October 19th. And it is being put together by the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Chamber. I hope to see our residents there. The tickets are $50 for the luncheon. And again, I just want to emphasize that this is not a city event, per se. This is put out by the Chamber of Commerce. That's why the event is not free. And the 20, October 20th, we will have a Fair Housing Foundation workshop at the Downey City Library from 2:30 to 4:30 p.m. So I hope to see you at all those events. Right now, I am going to go down for a couple of presentations so that we can get the business of the people started. Let's do this.
Okay, thank you again. I will be conducting presentations. And Mr. Herman, I need you to not be disruptive to our meeting, please. Tonight's Mayor Legacy Award goes to a very special individual. And as you have come to know, every mayor has a couple of awards or an award that they choose to present to special members of the community or people that have impacted our community in a great way, that have left a legacy. And I had the pleasure of meeting Meredith a few years ago. And while he referred himself as the little guy, he was actually a big guy with a big heart. And I would like to invite my dear friend and former mayor Mario Guerra to the podium with me, because as I speak, I would like him also to add a few words as well. A week ago Saturday, we convened about 300 people, right about at the Rio Hondo Event Center, to pay tribute to a really great mayor. Someone that was humble, someone that led with integrity, someone that didn't have an agenda, someone that sought to serve the community he lived in. And his friends, again, were from both sides of the aisle during the time he served. He, we weren't living in the divisive political times we're living in now. But had he lived during this time, and had he been serving during this time, he would continue to live in humility and by conviction and will continue to serve the community the best way he knew. He was involved in the Optimist Club. He was involved with the YMCA board. He was involved in Kiwanis. He was involved in the Chamber. He was involved in so many organizations in our community. And we actually have a skate park named after him, the Meredith Perkins Skate Park, which is right by Independence Park. He loved kids. He loved kids. He loved the youth, and he always wanted to have something for them. He loved sweets. He loved candy. And when I became elected during the times that I had the opportunity to meet with him, he imparted some great words of wisdom to me. And I sure miss former mayor Meredith Perkins. It is my great privilege to give him not only, I have it right here. Back in, I've said before that this year marks 65 years since Downey became an incorporated city. And earlier this year, I invited as many former mayors as I could possibly invite to be part of an iconic photograph. I believe in the, in bringing together people that have left their mark on this city. We may serve for four years. We may serve for eight years. Obviously, we have term limits. We can only serve for eight. But during that time, what we do matters. The legacy that we leave behind matters. People remember. There's a great quote by the great poet Maya Angelou, one of my favorites, by the way. And she said, "People will remember. People will forget what you said. People will forget what you wore. But people will not forget how you made them feel." And yes, we talk about words, you know, being important, and words matter. But how you make others feel, the type of support that you give them, the unconditional support you provide is crucial. And Mayor Meredith Perkins was a special kind of guy. So I invited many mayors. We took a really iconic picture. Unfortunately, when this happened, and this was still in the middle of COVID, we all had our little masks on, and then we came outside the civic center, and then we took our masks off so we could take the photograph. And we had 13 mayors. Unfortunately, that day, Mayor Meredith was really sick. He was too ill to make it to the picture. And then my dear friend Rick Rodriguez, former mayor, was also felt pretty ill that night. So we didn't, we weren't able to have that. So, but every mayor that was there got a key to the city, you know? And that's pretty symbolic. So I would like to give this to my friend Mario, as well as, I will read this to you. Posthumously, the Mayor's Legacy Award goes to Meredith Perkins. "On behalf of the citizens of Downey, in recognition of your selfless dedication and always going above and beyond for others. Your heartfelt efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you for leaving a legacy of service and generosity in our community. Given this 28th day of September 2021, Mayor Claudia Fremantle." Given this 28th day of September 2021, Mayor Claudia Fremetta. I do want to say, I do want to say something that, before we take the picture and Mario takes the podium, that one of the things that I admire, and we don't always agree on everything, by the way, but one of the things that I admire about Mario is what a great friend he is. And during the last year and a half, especially during the pandemic, Meredith lived alone, and he was very sick. He was very frail. And Mario and his wife Anne, and sometimes his son, took Meredith lunch every single day. And not just any lunch. They would select a different type of lunch from where, and of course, you supported local restaurants, but wherever Meredith wanted lunch. And what a special friend is that. So, thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Can we take a picture?
Sure. Thank you so much. And Dr. Greg Perkins and his other son Jeff Perkins and his daughter-in-law Angela, they couldn't be here tonight. So they asked me and along with the mayor to do that. Meredith Perkins was a good and decent man. Meredith Perkins was kind, and he was humble. He loved God. He loved his family, and he loved this community. He served here for well over 20 years. He was a planning commissioner for 12 years, and then he was on the city council for eight and two-time mayor. And he was a special friend. He was a mentor to me. But he was a friend to so many in our community, as many of you know. He's the one that actually asked me to run for a seat and get me into politics. So this means a lot, our community. He couldn't be there. He actually, he wept on the phone with me on there because he wanted to be there so bad. And he couldn't breathe the last year and a half, and he was with a breathing apparatus. The last time, his last public speaking was right here to swear in then-mayor Blanca Pacheco. Right here he stood. That was in November 2019. That was his last time. So Meredith Perkins knew this, and I'll end with this. He knew that at the end of our lives, God doesn't care what kind of car we drove. He's going to ask us, to whom did we give transportation to? And God doesn't care what kind of clothes we wear. He's going to ask us, to whom did we help clothe? And God just doesn't care what kind of house we live in. He's going to ask us, to whom did we bring into our homes? And lastly, God doesn't care what neighborhood we live in. He's going to ask us how we treated our neighbors. To these things, and every single one of those, Meredith Perkins answered in the affirmative. He was the 34th mayor of this great city. I was proud to be the 39th mayor of this great city. And Meredith will always have his legacy. So Mayor Fremetta, thank you so much for doing this. I don't know how you put up with some of the things that go on in these council meetings, all of you. It's pretty crazy just standing here and seeing some of this, but God bless you for your service to our community. Thank you. I'll make sure that his sons get this.
Another individual that I want to recognize tonight is someone very special. Someone who has dedicated the last three decades to helping children in our community. Gurith Milan. Milian, could you please come up with your family? I would like to say some things about Gurith and the Niños Latinos Unidos Foster Care and Adoption Agency that she founded. Yes, please stand here. Gurith is such an amazing lady. Over the past 27 years since Niños Latinos Unidos was founded with her husband Fahir, they have helped, tens of thousands of children and families from foster care to adoption. And again, Niños Latinos, Hispanic children, to find homes and especially homes that speak their language. And that has been really important to Gurith. Right now, the Center Niños Latinos Unidos has three offices. The main one in Bellflower, and then in Colton, and in Lancaster. Over the last several years, they have conducted many fundraiser events where families come from all over the valley, foster care families, adoptive parents, to be part of the fundraising efforts and also be blessed by the generosity of this family. We know how important children are to our community and how important it is for them to be safe. And there are so many parents that look for fostering opportunities. And Niños Latinos Unidos is an agency that works tirelessly to find the perfect home for these children, to keep them safe in an era of such traumatic episodes and ugliness where children are violated in different ways. Gurith and her agency have risen above and beyond to do really God's work and place children in the care of homes that will protect them. And with this, Gurith, over the past 27 years since the inception of your agency. And by the way, Gurith and Niños Latinos Unidos was recently named Nonprofit Organization of the Year by Senator Bob Archuleta. Gurith, in recognition of your outstanding citizenship and activities enhancing the community of Downey. And I say Downey, not only is Gurith a resident of Downey, but the children that have gone have been also part of Downey and Downey's families. Your exemplary efforts, Gurith, and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you, Gurith Milian, for being a champion for what is good, honorable in our community. God bless you.
Good evening. She says, Gurith Milian, but it's not only me. It's my team. It's my daughter, my daughters. Pedro is been with us since we start. So this is not only for me. This is for all, my workers, my coworkers, and all the childrens and all the foster parents. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I just want to say that this award for Niños Latinos Unidos is an award that speaks of a power couple, Fahir Milian and Gurith Milian, who for a period of about three decades decided to dedicate their lives to helping children have a chance at the American dream, seeing that there weren't agencies out there, institutions, that were helping the Latino community. They decided that they were going to start an agency where they could speak Spanish and train parents and bring children and help them get educated, help them have a family. And back in 1994, when the agency started, a lot of children were coming to to the agency's footsteps, recent immigrants. And many of them needed a family that would understand them, would talk to them, were linguistically and culturally sensitive to their needs. They stepped up, and they decided to dedicate themselves to this incredible God's work of rearing children and leading them in the path. We can say that they have successfully helped children become proud members of our communities and do wonderful things for everyone around in education and in other areas of life. But their job has been amazing. I've just been lucky enough to be there for the ride and to help them along the way. And I'm very grateful, and I'm thankful to the Downey City Council for this recognition. I'll be right here.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on. As I mentioned a short while ago, I will need to excuse myself due to my family emergency, and I will not be able to stay for the entire meeting. Next, I need to rearrange the agenda, and I will be taking the administrative reports first. There are two administrative reports this evening, and I will take item number 13 before item number 12. The administrative report, number 13, is the discussion regarding a vote of no confidence in Los Angeles District Attorney George Gascon and the adoption of a resolution related to that. I requested this item be brought before the council for discussion. And this is not something that cities should necessarily be bringing forth for a couple of things. When people elect individuals into office, it is the people who need to take it upon themselves to remove an individual. And it's not really cities or councils that need to be discussing this sort of situation. However, in this particular case, and this is an item that has been placed before all of our inboxes for several months, actually since April or May of this year. And I, believe me, I hesitated for quite some time because, as I said, a vote of no confidence in our DA doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean anything because it is a symbolic vote. Thirty, thirty other cities and other councils, in many cases, a four to zero, excuse me, a four to one or a five to zero vote have taken place. But nothing has changed. As a council, we can't change the fact that DA Gascon will continue to be DA Gascon. But the reason we have this matter before us is because I have been listening to the concerns of the residents of Downey. And it is important, I believe, for us as a council to listen to the people. We always talk about "we, the people" and how we, we need to make our voices heard. It is also important for the city because we have our own police department. And two weeks ago, in August 24th, our police captain Murray presented before us a very detailed presentation of what the current directives have meant for the city of Downey. Now, I also want you to know, those of you that are present and those that are watching via YouTube and Zoom, that I applaud DA Gascon's efforts to reform our criminal justice system. I think we have had a broken criminal justice system. However, I also believe that one individual, and again, this is my opinion, one individual cannot single-handedly reform a broken criminal justice system. When we have our own police department, and again, the reason why we're having this discussion because I've received daily, daily emails from my residents and messages about having this discussion. Ninety percent, according to the last, to the presentation that our Downey Police Department gave us, and this complete report is for your viewing, by the way. Ninety percent of the narcotics cases have been rejected by the DA. There's, when we look at public safety and when we look at what it is we want our communities to look like, we need to be able to understand that our law enforcement officials continue to do their job. Our law enforcement officers that are sitting here tonight and our police chief, they will continue to respond to every 911 call. They will continue to respond to every trespassing call they get or public intoxication or robbery or any number of situations that require law enforcement presence. And they will do their job, just as Captain Murray explained to us in the August 24th meeting. The problem we are facing is if the great majority of those cases are being rejected, that means we have criminals and criminal acts that don't necessarily have the right consequences. Hence, our communities and our community residents say, "I don't feel safe." We can have a police department that is robust, and we can have the majority of our budget placed in our police department. But if there's no consequences, what is, what is then the solution? I believe we need to rehabilitate people, but I don't believe that releasing prisoners early is rehabilitation. I don't believe that charging every crime, not charging every crime is not humane treatment. I also don't believe that eliminating bail makes the justice system fair for all. So again, I applaud DA Gascon's efforts to want to reform a criminal justice system that has been broken. That I applaud. And I would like to have a meeting with him. There's been 30 cities, and I doubt that 30 cities and the councils in those cities have gotten it wrong. There's something that is not right. And I asked to have this item placed before us. I had delayed this out of respect to my council colleague Trujillo. But at the same time, I cannot, I could not not bring it before, before you because the residents of Downey were clamoring for us to have this discussion. Now, however, whichever way... Now, however, whichever way it goes, I don't know how it's going to go tonight. But I want you to know, Downey, that as your mayor, I heard you. And you have a police department that will continue to arrest those individuals that are breaking the law. The problem is, many of those cases may or may not be seen, may or may not be rejected. I, I will open it to my council colleagues, since I was the one that put it in the agenda. I felt that it was appropriate for me to begin this discussion and let you know my stance on this and let my residents know, because you elected me to do a job. Let my residents know that regardless of how the vote goes tonight, I need you to know that I hear you. I need you to know that this community will continue to move forward and that, at the end of the day, a vote of confidence or no confidence on an elected individual doesn't have any, any real weight. What has weight is the people deciding to recall someone that is in office. I will now open it up for my council colleagues. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if, seeing that there are no comments from our colleagues, I'd like to just open this up for public comment.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open it up for public comment.
So why weren't you wearing a mask like you're supposed to, Mr. Martí? You think I want to catch COVID here at the mic? I got my special mask on for you. Isn't it cute? So, we're dealing with an issue about George Gascon. And out of thirty jackass cities that don't like George Gascon, who I support as an individual, as an independent, say 42 SC 1983, fuck those cities like Arcadia. On attachment number three of Ortizia, Azusa, Covina, Diamondboro, La Habra Highs, Manhattan Beach, Monrovia, Norweger, all a bunch of criminals, jackasses, leave George alone. The same way we should leave Alex Villanueva alone because he knows how to tell the five cunts of the board of supervisors, "To do your job, he'll do his job, and the DA will do their job." Got it? Leave us? So like Pico Rivera, Rancho Palaveras, Redondo Beach, Santa Clarita, Santa Fe Springs, Temple City, all the niggers in these cities who deem George Gascon District Attorney not liable, he's very liable. He's liable because he's allowed you criminals, like Mr. Manager there, to get away with those embezzlement receipts, but nobody takes him to jail, right? So what's wrong with people smoking a little herb and getting released early? What's wrong with people stealing to make a living? Let them out early. What's wrong with people having independent problems in society being released because you jackasses of the courts, all you fucked up judges of Los Angeles, California, don't do shit to cure and correct the problems that you don't want to solve? Assholes, jackass, idiots. So now, for September 28, 2021, Agenda Item 13, I'm here to say I support George Gascon because I, like Trump, got big 45 balls to speak up and protest on behalf of those who we elect and should run their course of time as we place them in the position they're in to do their job in the way they feel they have the ability and the capacity to run our fucked up cities like you city manager Levas who allowed that gentleman to steal, to steal, to steal in those embezzlement receipts, fool? So the world should know, vote for George Gascon or not. It's all about a choice, your independent choice. And don't interrupt me, fatty.
Good evening. My name is Anna Brown, and I want to start by saying thank you to Madam Mayor for putting this on the agenda. I have been up here numerous times, as many others who are in this room right now and others who are not, asking for this topic to be put on the council meeting agenda. So thank you so much for hearing us. It is no secret that the directives of DA George Gascon are dangerous to our communities. Crime is on the rise. Violent and habitual criminals are being led out into our neighborhoods. Law offenders are not being prosecuted. Public safety laws approved by the people are being ignored. And most importantly, victims of crimes are no longer being represented. As a resident of Downey, I want to live in a safe community. And as elected city officials, each of you is responsible for the safety of our city and for responding to when we, who live in this city, ask something that we want you guys to represent. As the res, as Madam Mayor mentioned, thirty other cities have already voted no confidence on DA George Gascon. They cannot all be wrong. I'm asking that we add the city of Downey to that list. I'm asking each of you to help keep our beautiful city of Downey safe, to send a message that is loud and clear, and to vote no confidence on DA George Gascon. I want to also, since I have the opportunity right now, I want to say thank you to our wonderful Downey Police Department for continuing to do their jobs. You know, I think the majority of the citizens respect you and appreciate you. I know I certainly do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeffrey Phillips, and I appreciate the opportunity to go and speak tonight in regard to this topic, which I think is certainly something that is dear and near to many of our hearts. So with regard to George Gascon, certainly, we don't have a perfect criminal justice system. We have, it's supposed to be an adversarial system, but with Gascon's policies, it really doesn't seem that way, particularly when he is bringing in folks from the Public Defender's Office to work in his office. The alternative to incarceration that were mentioned earlier, again, his, you know, he gets an E for effort, and I understand some of the things that he's trying to fix. But what we are facing with George Gascon is a draconian move with regard to dealing with public safety, really. And that's doing away with certain things, such as no death, no death penalty. I don't know if you're aware, I'm sure Mr. Trujillo is aware, but a death penalty, you know, when was the last time that someone in California was put to death? But a death penalty means that a governor can go ahead and commute that sentence, and it could be commuted only to, or not only, but commuted to life, life in prison. Whereas, no death penalty or life in prison can be commuted to releasing that individual. And so, for some of these heinous crimes, such as homicides, that's a really big concern for everybody. We have a, homicides are, have increased. Certainly, they've started to increase before George Gascon was voted into office, but certainly, it hasn't let up. And his approach in not allowing for certain enhancements, such as gang enhancements, to be included, really reduce the ability for prosecutors to do their job. And so, really, we, there's something that we need to keep in mind, and that is, the DA's office, victims of crimes depend on the DA's office. The, the representing attorney for a victim is the DA's office. It's, it's not the DA's office representing the suspect. And it just seems that there, that's the overarching thing that we have. And again, I, I understand that there's some things that need to be fixed. You know, bail needed to be fixed, but that drastic measure of just not having, you know, or releasing everybody. And when you have law enforcement agencies, you know, I'm not exactly sure about Downey, but the LEPD has had to put a policy in place to keep track of individuals that get arrested and released and rearrested and released and rearrested so they could finally keep them in custody so they could stop committing crimes. Again, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fermenta. My name is Bill Adrian, and I'm here to let you know how disappointed I am that it took the city council this long to put this issue on the agenda. All because you claim to show respect to Mario Trujillo, who has not been respectful at all in return. You caved to one man over the community that you claim to serve. His behavior towards the interim chief a couple of weeks ago and to a member of the audience on the same night was unacceptable. And yet, he suffered no consequences because of it. I've been here for plenty of meetings to express my frustrations. And at this point, all I can say is Mario Trujillo should be ashamed of himself for not recusing himself from this vote and putting the needs and wants of his community first. He's selfish and a professional. He only thought of himself and the piece of garbage that he works for and/or worked for. The time has finally arrived for you to do the right thing. But at this point, it's too late. And I hope that the residents of the city of Downey remember that come next election. There's only one person that I support in this city council, and that's Mayor Fermenta. There's only so much that she could do, and she tried her best. And as for the rest of the council, it's a shame that she didn't step up when you should have. You all should be ashamed of yourselves as well. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We, the people of both the city of Downey and LA County as a whole. This item is to the directives of the DA. It's presented as an administrative item about a question why this was not a public hearing so that we would have then provided the opportunity to hear the opposing views from the LA Deputy DA Jonathan Hatami, who is speaking up as to the issues that are going on within the DA's office. We, the people, have a right to hear from opposing views and have a right to full disclosure as to what is going on in the DA's office. This is not just about Downey, but about LA County. I understand the council member Trujillo is one of the LA, is one of the ones who used, is or was with the LA DA's office. Devote the appearance of a bias and to his fiduciary duty to we, the people, this should have been an item placed before now. We have a right to the truth as to the issues that are going on with the LA DA's office. I sent emails to all council members to at least review the following: the court transcripts of a murdered son, the lawsuit filed by the LA DA Prosecutor's Union, the amicus brief filed by the California DA Association, and the ruling by a judge. I'm asking the city council to make a yes on this resolution of no confidence. We are all concerned about, most importantly, is the health and safety of our children, and that's what I think is being jeopardized. God bless America, and God bless our military families, and God bless local policing and their families. Thank you for your consideration.
You may proceed.
I want to start off by pointing out that when it comes to an item or a subject that the mayor cares about, you don't get a 30-minute limit, and you don't get anyone getting their time cut off to two or one minute.
Mr. Martinez, please stay on topic.
Moving on. One of the quotes that the mayor said is that "one individual cannot change the system by itself." Now, if you are a minority here today, and you get yourself informed, you know that the prison industrial complex has benefited, benefited, made millions, and has prospered from disproportionately targeting minorities, particularly black people and brown people in our communities. Not addressing minor drug offenses, which is a health issue, addressed by psychologists and health experts, that is not a reason to cage people or to put records that prevent them from having jobs or from having a fulfilling future or from seeking the treatment that they need. Incarcerating people unjustly for minor offenses that can be dealt with medically is not only immoral, but it should be punished as a cruel and unusual punishment. And that should not only extend to minor offenses, that should extend to the death penalty. Don't come at me with "justice for the victim." What you want is revenge, because the death penalty is a waste of money. It doesn't reduce crimes. It doesn't affect the way we conduct our judicial system statistically. And it doesn't benefit us financially as a state. An argument that people said, "Thirty cities, thirty cities are supporting this." Well, let me give you an example of the time that 22 cities voted to sue a water firm that gave you voting rights. Just because cities are supporting something, it does not mean that that is the will of the people. Far from it. Gascon commands the majority support. And that's why none of you clown Republicans could get enough votes to put them on the recall ballot. You don't, you're not the majority, you're the minority, and you are wrong and misinformed. And I would be more than happy to sit down with any of you after this meeting to let you know how these talking points that you're bringing up are actually racist ideology that not only empowers the prison industrial complex, but continues to destroy black and brown communities. That concludes my comment. But I, I do expect the council members to make the right decision and do not, do not cave into ridiculous claims that are unverified by Republicans who just want to continue to run the same racist system that has disproportionately destroyed our communities.
Sorry, I'm short. Okay. I wanted to make a comment on something that Ms. Fermenta said about cash, eliminating cash bail. Right now, in LA County Jail, there's a huge percentage of people in there who have been awaiting trial simply because they cannot have bail. It's a class issue, and it's a race issue. Going on, I wanted to echo some of the things about drug offenses. A lot of drug offenses are actually in the Health and Safety Code, so they're not really considered crimes per se. So I don't feel like we should criminalize an illness, especially one such as chemical dependency. And I also wanted to say that I'm probably going to play devil's advocate here, and I'm going to ask the city to vote no confident, vote no on the no confidence vote. George Gascon's been doing a lot of things for people, and I know that crime victims... they do matter, but again, George Gascon is one person, and he just entered office. He's not going to make change overnight, but he's already made a significant change for a lot of things, including a subject that you guys talked about, the alternatives to incarceration, which is amazing. We have a we shouldn't criminalize poverty. And again, just to end my comment, I'm voting against the vote of no confidence. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emma Rivas, and I am a parent to a murdered victim. My son was killed by a gang member, and yes, you need to vote no confidence on this guy. If it was your kid that got murdered by a gang member, you will want the full extent of the law being pursued. Mr. George Gascon, I understand he has a reform mind, Mr. Mario Trujillo. I heard you're his buddy, which is okay. But if your son or daughter got killed, you will want the gang enhancements added on to a murder trial.
Ma'am, please direct your comments towards me.
Okay, Blanca and everybody, you will want full justice. When your child or parent or cousin or sister is murdered, you want the law to work for you, not against you. My son was killed by a gang member, and Gascon dropping the gang enhancements, that's going to release the criminal more early, and guess what? Into your cities, our cities. Are you okay walking around with pedophiles and murderers in your neighborhood because you want to be best friends with Gascon? Because of your position? You know, you guys are all voted officials too. Remember, your city will be affected with Gascon's directives and enhancement removal. If you don't understand what enhancements means, the guy that murdered my son is a pro crim he is actually a professional criminal. Two weeks out of jail, he murders my son, leaves my other son for attempted murder. The guy that murdered my family is going to only serve 18 years. Are you guys okay with having to be run around in the city with murderers after serving 18 years? Are you guys okay with that? This happened in Los Angeles County. I'm right next door. You don't think the criminals are going to be moving into your cities? Gascon lives in a nice neighborhood. I can guarantee you the murderer's not going to be moving to where Gascon lives. I'm just saying that I am a parent to two sons. One died, one survived, and Gascon's dropping the gang enhancement, and he is a gang member. If it was your child, wouldn't you want the gang enhancements put on the on the prosecution side? When did we become so complacent with pedophiles walking with us? When have we become so complacent that murderers don't deserve jail time? Are you guys understanding what Gascon's directive and enhancements means to us? Well, it means a lot to me. This guy could have got 20 years more if Mr. Gascon leaves the gang enhancements and the parolee with the gun. Well, guess what? With you guys not going, you guys would have been the 31st city to vote no yes on the no vote confidence. Do your city a favor and do what's right for your city, not yourselves.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Donna Estevez, and I am present tonight to urge the City Council to cast a no confidence vote in relationship to District Attorney George Gascon. As you look around, I see people and have taken on the role to serve the local community and protect the citizens. As you know, this is not an easy undertaking, and you, as our representatives, are all those you represent, depend upon the actions of others in government to effectively provide a safe and just community for us to live in. We also trust in you to provide, to the best of your ability, a sense of justice. Again, no easy task. Four years ago, Mr. Trujillo, my five-year-old grandson, Piki, was suffocated to death by his father in the backseat of his car while asleep and strapped into his car seat. The murderer wanted to seek revenge against my daughter for wanting a divorce and trying to protect her child. My daughter's ex-husband knew that murdering her only child was the one true way to hurt her, and he did devastatingly so. This monster was sentenced to 25 years to life. Due to the implementation of District Attorney Gascon's policies, the child murder could potentially be released in 11 years. Gascon believes that a criminal, regardless of the horrendous of the crime, should be sentenced to a maximum of 15 years. This is completely unacceptable. The policy revictimizes victims. There is no sense of justice, quite honestly. I fear for my safety and the safety of my daughter. What guarantee is DA Gascon going to provide that this murderer will not hurt me or my daughter? If he could kill a five-year-old innocent child, there is nothing that would stop him from seeking revenge on those who survived the nightmare that he has created. Again, I urge you, the City Council, to render a vote of no confidence for George Gascon. He has not protected our community, refuses to listen to the pleas of victims, and has implemented policies that do not reflect a fair, just, and democratic society. Also, I would like to add, unless you become a victim, and anyone can become a victim, believe me, we never thought we would, but you can become a victim. And if you walk one day in our shoes as victims, you will know exactly how we feel. We don't have one night's sleep that's a full night's sleep. We wake up in the morning thinking about our murdered victim. We dream about our murdered victims. And we continue to cry for our murdered victims. Thank you. Thank you.
Mike Greenspan, a brewing butt-kicking Florida Gator, and well, it's about time you guys got onto this job, this issue. After all, 30 cities have voted no confidence. Well, that's funny. We have about 89 or 90 incorporated cities in LA County, so apparently, 2/3 of those cities have not voted a no confidence measure. To me, I think of no confidence as the equivalent of you guys jerking your dicks. It does nothing. It does nothing. This is not a European Parliament system or an Israeli Parliament system. When you vote no confidence, there goes the government. We'll have another election. This won't bring on another election. Now, you folks that want no confidence, get up off your fat ass and quit fucking around and go circulate the petition and get enough signatures to force an election. That's the way something should be done, instead of this jerking your dick kind of and playing with your puss kind of feel-good motion. That's all it is. My brother, before working 40 years in private practice, unlike your cradle-to-grave, unionized mouthpiece up there, Garcia, worked in the public defender's office. And a bailiff in Duval County, Florida, who had been in the system 20 years, said, "If you want justice, go to a whorehouse. If you want to get fucked, go to court." That's probably the best description. And maybe people like Trujillo would be in denial, being with the DA's office, but I'll tell you, this is a fucked-up system, and you want, I mean, look, look at what law enforcement gets behind for candidates. John Lee in LA at the heart of the sexual harassment case, and his predecessor, Mitchell Englander, a part-time pig who's now in jail. Slap, slap, slap your hand. He was supposed to get three to five years in prison, but this Kike Furor, who's city attorney and wants to be mayor, butted in, and Uncle Harvey Englander butted in of Englander Schanab, and guess what? The three to five years he was that Kike Englander was supposed to get got reduced to 14 months in some country club, Bring Your Golf Club prison in Tucson, Arizona, outside the maximum-security prison. Well, I guess Englander has some good golf clubs. In Florida, we call it Eglin Air Force Base, but it's a different one here. So, and as far as I'm concerned, I may I've signed the petition, but I might vote no because of cunts like Rhonda Saunders working for the DA, her and her white trash friend Nancy Grace. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, obviously, there's a vote before the council, each and every council member tonight. Some seem to be happy with George Gascon's reforms. They're even applauding him. You might want to rethink that applause, because his reforms are working. That's why murders have gone up in the nation 30%. They're working. He's doing his job, and he's got plenty of help doing it. A lot of the help that he gets are people that are in audiences like this here, or they're on city councils, or they're working in his DA's office. They're working. They hate the system. They keep mentioning how bad the system is. Well, the only system you really need to know is your own moral compass. If you can't do the time, don't do the crime, and that gets down to the individual again. We don't arrest all black people for two black people committing a murder. They're all different. We don't arrest all brown people for two brown people committing a murder. We don't arrest all white people for one or two white people that commit a murder. You can't broad-brush groups of people and say that that's their representative of the entire group. They're all individuals. They're all individuals. Now, the question is, who's going to have enough backbone tonight to stand up and vote for this vote of no confidence? Or is it going to be a situation where we waited late in the evening to try to turn ourselves into a pretzel just to vote for the LGBT flag at night? It was late in the evening, and some people tried to justify their vote for that, even claiming they didn't have any skin in the game, when they actually did. Now, the problem is, is these reforms are helping certain people that hate our system, Black Lives Matter, LGBT people. They hate our system, and they want to change it. And we have data on them throughout the last century. These are progressive, liberal politicians and ideologues, and they have slaughtered over 130 million people in the last 100 years that has disagreed with them. Now, that's where we're heading. If you want to applaud that, go right ahead. If you want to vote to support that, go right ahead, but that'll be a sad day when that happens. They want you dead. They want America dead, and they want all God-fearing Americans dead.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Moses Castillo. I'm a LA County stakeholder and a Marci's Law Representative. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Trujillo for leaving the DA's office and becoming a private defense attorney, as he's following his heart. If only Mr. Gascon would do the same. I believe that the district attorney role is to advocate for victims. I have no issues with Mr. Gascon wanting to do all the reforms he wants to do. My issue is, he's doing it in the wrong office. He needs to go to the public defender's office and advocate all he wants for the criminals. Let me bring it home to you. Recently, there was a victim, female Hispanic victim in Los Angeles, who was murdered by being burned alive. When she tried to get away from her boyfriend, and she was torch, she became a human torch. Mr. Gascon has refused to charge that individual with special circumstances of murder with fire. That would enable this particular defendant, who would get a public defender or private defender or private attorney, to advocate for him, and let the chips fall where they may. We're asking for George Gascon to apply California law on these cases. That's all we're asking for. Why is it only different in LA County and San Francisco County, the two only counties in Southern California where the laws are being ignored? That's our whole point here. And for those of you that said that the recall has failed, it's far from over. We're just a reset. We're going to do it over. So today, the city residents of Downey will know who has their back, which mayor, which city councilman, vote that has their back because they care about the victims. And they will, because this meeting that's been recorded on YouTube will play it over and over and over again to make sure people know, oh, you voted. And I pray that I appeal to your human heart. Yes, this is symbolic. This is not going to make George Gascon do a thing, but it does send a message to your constituents, it sends a message to your residents on how you stand. And Ms. Alvarez tipped away when I was speaking, so that's pretty good. I like that. You know what else? Mr. Gascon and his office has changed tremendously. Because I'm a Marci's Law Representative, I retired from LEPD investigating crimes against children for the majority of my career, crimes of physical abuse, sex abuse, and murder of children. So you can imagine, I've seen the worst of the worst. I've been getting phone calls in my in my office with Samuel Dordley, my boss, every day almost, for us to advocate for victims, because George Gascon's philosophy and views has stripped away a prosecutor from the ability to fight and fiercely advocate for the victims. Instead, what does he do? He advocates for criminals. Thank you for your time. Vote against Mr. Gascon.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Levis and staff. I would encourage the council to vote against the resolution to support Mr. Gascon. I realize Mr. Gascon was elected recently on a basis of changing the criminal justice system, and apparently, the majority of people like that. And some of the changes that Mr. Gascon has introduced have been good, but there's been other changes that he incorporated that have really changed or altered the scales of justice to be pro-criminal instead of pro-victim. I think most of us here understand down deep that when you are very liberal or lenient to criminals within our system, that sooner or later, the majority of those people, criminals, will tend to go back and commit other crimes. I hope that none of you on this basis, including myself and the people here, will ever become victims of those additional crimes. So for that, I encourage the council to have a vote of no confidence, and Mr. George Gascon just ends my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the city council. My name is Karen Roseberry. I'm a concerned citizen of Los Angeles County, and I'm here today to support the vote of a no-confidence vote in DA George Gascon. There's been a lot of hyperbole tonight. There's been a lot of divisive rhetoric. There's been a lot of things that are off-topic. What this really relates to is simply, is the city of Downey supportive of the enforcement of the rule of law? That is, the one job of the district attorney is to prosecute crime. That's why we have a district attorney's office. He took office, and on his first day in office, he issued a series of directives that said, "I'm not going to prosecute the law. These crimes, I'm just not going to prosecute." That's not his role, that's not his right, that's not his job, and that's not what he was elected to do. And 30 cities have come to that same conclusion, and it is the hope that the city of Downey will come to that same conclusion as well. Many times, there's talk about this being racial, or there's talk about this being partisan or political. He ran against a black Democratic woman. This is not racial, this is not political, this is not partisan. This is simply, is he doing the job of the district attorney? And his directives do not see him doing that. Are reforms needed? Absolutely. And I think everyone on the city council that I've heard speak about this, and those that are reasonable and rational, will address that as well. The problem is, is that his directives are not addressing reform in a way that will actually help even the people that he alleges that they will help. When he speaks to the communities of color that have what he would refer to as the systematic racism of our country, that's just false. If we look at who the victims of these crimes are, they are at a much higher level and proportion of those that are in those very same minority communities. And this needs to be addressed. This needs to be acknowledged, because they want the law to be the standard that is equitably applied, not selectively applied. That is where the issue has come into question for 20 years, 30 years, however many years you want to allege that there have been concerns or problems with our judicial system. It is consistently because of selective enforcement of crime and not equitable enforcement of the rule of law. It is that equitable enforcement of the rule of law that concerned Angelenos are coming together and saying, "We want the law enforced equitably across the board for all. You break the law, you'll be prosecuted." Can there be varying levels, and can there be degrees of that prosecution depending on the crime? Absolutely. Should there be reforms in the legislature? Absolutely. And many of those are taking place. But we don't disregard the rule of law. And while I know it is a symbolic vote for each of you, you are elected officials, and you have a louder voice than a voice that is hoped will be heard by another elected official. So I ask that you will take this vote of no confidence and vote yes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Buenas noches al Consejo de la Ciudad de Downey.
Just a minute, just a minute, do we have a translator?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Just make sure, Mr. Rodriguez, make sure you pause so we can translate. Thank you.
Buenas noches al Consejo de la Ciudad de Downey. Estamos hablando de Gastón. Gastón en esta ciudad tiene un tentáculo puesto, y el señor acá, Mario Trujillo.
We're talking about Gascon. Good evening to city council members here in Downey. When talking about Gascon, he has tentacles that are here in the city, and we're talking about Mr. Mario Trujillo right here before us. This person here, while working under his boss, Gascon, was representing a person from the Mara 18, someone who was shot, killing one person and leaving the other wounded.
Please direct your comments. No te rías, Trujillo, porque tú sabes que tú lo defendiste. Esa persona debería haberle dado por vida, y nada más lo negociaste cinco años.
Por favor, dirija sus comentarios hacia mí. Gracias.
Through here, you should not be laughing. You know that you represented this person, the person who should have gotten life, you bargained, and this person got five years. And if you don't want us to address this comment, maybe when you get up to go to the bathroom, we can continue to talk.
Tú sabes mejor que nadie que tú lo defendiste. Salió por las noticias y están en los récords. Tú defendiste una rata, okay? Una rata que mató a personas, gente trabajadora.
You know that you represented this person. This is something that has come out in the news, it has been covered. You defended someone who is a rat, who killed working people.
La otra, en el otro meeting, tú le diste al policía, "Oh, dame los papeles que voy a hacer." ¿Cómo tú vas a defender ahora? ¿Quieres limpiarte después de lo que tú hiciste, defendiendo uno de la Mara 18? Aquí lo único que falta es que tú digas, ¿qué onda ese?
Please, please direct your comments.
You said at the previous meeting that if you were given the papers, you asked to be given the papers, but why? Why you say that you're just trying to clean up what you have done, that you defended somebody from the Mara 18? The only thing more that you have left to do is to talk like them and to say, "Hey, what's going on, ese?"
I just want to remind members of the audience here, speaking on our public comment. Please, this is part of our meeting rules, please direct all your comments to the mayor, to myself, please. And regarding administrative reports, all of the administrative reports are given three minutes. With the emergency order in place, the non-agenda public comment may be reduced, depending on the number of individuals present to speak. And that is per the emergency order that gives us 30 minutes for that. Thank you. You may proceed.
Good evening, council members. My name is Daniel Aguilar, and I'm here because I was glad to hear at the beginning of the meeting, there is a lot of problems for homeless people. So I'm glad to hear that, because in the approximate two years, or maybe one year, I won't have been in the same situation. I have a wife, I have a 12-years-old kid, he's going currently to the school. And I'm glad to hear that, but I'm very worried about that, because I don't see any...
Hi, I'm sorry. We are currently, this public comment is for the administrative report regarding DA Gascon. Is your comment about that item?
It's a later.
There will be an opportunity to speak on public comment about a different issue.
Okay, so I can come back later?
Yes.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience. Thank you.
My name is Bill Wallace, and I agree with you that after you vote no confidence, yes, DA Gascon will still be the DA. But it will send a message, along with the 30 cities and hopefully more other cities to come, that people are concerned, that people will not stand for it, and perhaps a lot of people don't even know that they can do something about it, because they haven't even heard one way or the other. And I for one, and there's others that have may have mentioned it too, but I for one am here to let you know that after you've taken the vote of no confidence, and most of us would applaud that, you can march right down to places like Schroeder's Piano and sign the petition to recall. The petitions are still there. In fact, I have some with me, and if they have to be redone, because we haven't had enough signatures yet, they will still be there. Thank you.
I make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
And city, so ordered by the mayor. Thank you. City clerk, did we receive correspondence on this particular item?
Yes, Mayor, we did. We received a total of 10 written comments, seven of those in favor of a vote of no confidence, and three in opposition.
Okay. Thank you.
And just so the members of the public know, copies have been provided to the council at your seats, and then there's copies in the back of the room on the table.
Thank you, city clerk. Duarte.
So the item before you is a decision on whether to adopt the resolution, which is a vote of no confidence in Los Angeles County District Attorney George Gascon.
Madam Mayor, find me.
Yes, please.
So I've been debating this for a while now. I mean, there's a lot of people on both sides that have contacted me, telling me what they think and why they think it, and I respect each and every one of you. When I first started on council, I'm going to kind of tangent off, and hopefully, I'll bring it back to an actual point in a few minutes. But when I first started on council, one of the big issues that we had kind of talking about was a couple of propositions and assembly bills. So I believe it was Assembly Bill 809, and then Proposition 47, and then Proposition 57. And a lot of those issues are something that, when I was first on council, I did not necessarily agree with what was being proposed to us. A lot of these issues were basically some of the issues that allowed certain crimes to be categorized as misdemeanors instead of felonies. You know, gun, certain gun possession charges could be considered a misdemeanor as opposed to a felony. And looking at all this, you know, we've had these conversations, talking to our legislators in that, why are we dealing with all these issues of crime? And then this issue kind of came up on Facebook, and I, you know, somehow got involved, and geez, I still don't know why. But it was actually good, because one of the, I mean, basically, I kind of asked my question to everyone, you know, what is this going to accomplish? That's what I wanted to know. What do you think this is going to accomplish? Because as the mayor previously stated, this was basically, like, this has no legal bearing on anything. This is an opportunity for us to let you come tell us how you feel about this particular topic. And regardless of whatever happens on the dais after all of that, that's, it's not going to do anything else other than that. But so I wanted to ask, what was the purpose of that? And, you know, certain comments and conversations, and one part of it kind of came up, and I kind of brought up, you know, well, we had these issues because some of these laws that got passed. And one person actually reminded me, well, you know who wrote the Proposition 47 and Proposition 57? Or was a co-author of that? And, you know, honestly, at the time, I didn't know then, I just assumed it was there. And they showed me the documentation, it was George Gascon. And so he was one of the principal authors of those two propositions. I actually had a chance to talk to him when he was running for DA, and I let him know, I didn't necessarily agree with what he was actually trying to do, but like with any candidate, I'm going to give them the time of day to at least sell me on what they're doing. And I just let him know, I don't necessarily, I agree with certain parts of it. Like, honestly, he, I think today was announced some of the drug, the 60,000-some-odd drug thing. To me, that's a no-brainer. I think that should have been done. But dealing with some of these serious crimes, I think we've made, or not we, I think he's made a misstep in being able to do what I think most people would want him to do. And so that kind of comes around to my vote today, because like, in theory, this really shouldn't be a topic for us as council. Really, my whole thought was, you know, I'm just going to abstain, because it's really not even a topic for us to deal with, because there's no purview on that. But I have to think back to some of these issues, and while I think as an elected official, he actually said what he was going to do, and then he got elected, and then he actually did what he was going to do. I mean, honestly, when you think of elected officials, I mean, regardless of what that was, he actually said what he was going to do. And, you know, I can think of a lot of elected officials that'll tell you one thing and do something else. You know, it's just kind of amazing. But just because somebody says that this is what they're going to do, and then they do it, doesn't necessarily make it the right thing to do. And as much as I think that this necessarily isn't the right way of doing it, and even with whatever vote we take, it's not going to mean much if people don't do what they think they should do, which is, you know, the recall. And hearing that supporters of the recall kind of said they're going to reset, you know, I don't know. You know, if that's something that you believe in and you support, then that's fine, that you're right, and, you know, I don't know what our vote's going to do because of that. But there are certain things that I do not agree with that he's done, and that's kind of where I'm at right now, where I feel I would support this resolution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashton.
Just a couple of things. Mr. Rodriguez, you and your wife make me laugh, because you're the people that I always had in mind when I ran for this office. I knew there would be people coming here and criticizing me and my character, trying to disparage the work that I'm doing. So I think you're a joke, and that's why I laugh, sir. I was waiting for the part where you get to talk about our city manager's salary, like you always do. So if I laugh, it's because you, sir, make me laugh. Now you're saying that I'm part of some gang, Mara Sabatrucha 18, right? And you want me to talk like, "What's up, ese?" So when I see you downtown Downey, I greet you appropriately. Okay, bato? Bato loco? De la 18? Anyways. So now, to the issue of bail. Contrary to what the mayor has stated, nobody has eliminated bail. There's someone in each courtroom across LA County that decides if somebody gets released on bail or not. It's called a judge. And a constitutional case just came down that says that in order for a judge to impose bail, he or she must first make a determination as to whether that person is dangerous. The DA does not release people on jail. We can make our position known, but even though we have a position, the decision to release somebody is made by a judge. That's still going on in LA County. Life crimes. To the mother of the victim, in our office, we still... You know, to the mother of the victim, in our office, we still continue to prioritize victims. But contrary to what somebody has said today, the DA does not represent victims. We are tasked with representing everyone that comes into the criminal justice system. Yes, Mr. Gascon, the DA, wants us to consider the backgrounds of defendants, which is something that we really were never trained to do. We don't talk to defendants, we don't meet defendants, we don't represent defendants. But we're being asked to consider more about who they are and where they come from to try to reach a more equitable system. But victims continue to be our priority. We still continue to fight for victims when people who are accused will not take responsibility for their actions. We still go to trial to seek convictions in front of juries against the defendants. Life crimes, homicides in the state of California carry, if it's a second-degree murder, 15 to life. The L is very important. First-degree murder continues to carry a sentence of 25 to life. The victim's mother is correct. If you only get a sentence of 25, it is foreseeable that a defendant can come in front of a parole board and be released at 18. That is correct. But please do not disregard the fact that parole boards still exist. It's not the DA that releases people, okay? It's parole boards. If you committed a murder in the state of California, there's only one body that can release you, and that's a parole board. And if a parole board decides to give you parole, the governor still has to approve it. There's two levels, as we're seeing with the case of Sir Hans or Han. So the parole boards, when it comes to murder cases, has only released, and look, everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own set of facts. And perhaps Detective Castillo could verify this. In the state of California, parole boards will only release, have only released, 19% of individuals who were convicted of murders, individuals who were facing life crimes. That's less than 20%. And of those 19% that have been released, 1% have recidivated. That means they return to the criminal justice system. So this idea that murderers will be released in the state of California because George Gascon has issued these directives is being exaggerated to the point where now we're saying he's releasing people, dangerous people and serious people, much earlier. There's still a concept of danger that we consider in the office, and for anyone to believe that George Gascon or the staff is bent on releasing dangerous criminals is preposterous. There is different systems of checks and balances in this system. We still have three branches of government. Mr. Gascon only serves in one. Let's not forget there's judges out there looking out for us, okay? Because they have a responsibility to look out for dangerous individuals and not release them. Look, we're strapped with budget concerns across the board, whether you're a city agency, a state agency, or a county agency. The office did make a determination that we would not file on first-time offenders in some misdemeanor areas. The narcotics charges, the Board of Supervisors with all their directives, and again, this is up for you to verify, we have Ivan Solak here from Janice Hans' office, let the Board of Supervisors tell you why they're closing Men Central Jail, why they have an ATI program, why they had cares-first jails last. And as much as I hate to say it, once in a while, I do agree with Mr. Martinez, we're being asked to look at narcotics, addiction, through a public health lens. Most of these addicts are not dangerous. They're ill. And many of them are in our families, and you know some of them. For you to believe that the best way to deal with that is to incarcerate people is antiquated. We must use our resources in a way that will address the health concern. If you want people to be locked up for carrying a meth pipe, being high as a kite on these drugs, LA County is not the place where that's going to happen, and much of America is no longer doing it. The state legislature started with deferred entry of programs years ago. We are being asked to use our resources to address addiction, and processing them through the criminal justice system simply is not the answer. At least, we don't believe it is, and we're trying a new approach. How do we best use our resources to continue to focus on reducing violent and serious crime is key. As a father of a 22-year-old daughter, an 11-year-old son, I could easily be offended when somebody says that me and my buddy, Mr. Gascon, want to release people. It's preposterous. In many ways, this is a political vendetta against Mr. Gascon. This recall was announced the week, a week after his directives were issued by primarily right-wing Republican Trumpsters. Now, I'm not saying that everyone, I'm not saying that everyone that's for this recall is a right-wing Republican Trumpsters. There's Democrats. There's victims' families are involved. You're being heard. But we're trying a new approach. It's simply a new approach to public safety, and as elected officials, we're tasked with using your resources to try to bring about rehabilitation for individuals. So please remember that we still have prisons, we still have police agencies that will continue to respond and arrest individuals who need to be arrested. The length of time on these sentences may be in disagreement, but there are still people who are going to go to jail because that's where they need to be. But the fact of the matter is that we were over-incarcerating, locking up people that were not dangerous, and we need to fix the system. I'm glad everybody agrees that the system was broken prior to December 7th, when Mr. Gascon took office, and continues to be broken. Let's fix it. Let's work together. But this recall and this vote of no confidence is not the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I first want to start off just by thanking and commending everybody who came up and spoke today on this item. This item is a difficult one. I definitely care about public safety. Public safety has always been my priority, and my police department means the world to me. So this one's a really tough one because, the reason I say that is because the voters are the ones that voted him in. Like Councilmember Ashton had mentioned, he never lied. He didn't say one thing, and as soon as he got elected, do something else. Exactly what he said is what he did. So I think it's also important for the voters to be educated on what they vote for. So this one is a very difficult topic because a vote of no confidence gets us nowhere. So I do have a question for our police chief. I want to see if we track certain data. I know it was mentioned today's meeting and also in the previous meeting that first-time offenders are not being filed for those cases, for those misdemeanor cases. But who tracks the data as to whether it's a first-time offender or whether it's an offender who has committed multiple offenses? Do we track that in our police department?
Madam Mayor, Protem, that information is maintained through the statewide and federal systems. We do have access to those systems. When we make an arrest for someone, the arrest is not based on prior arrest charges, right? It's based on what we're dealing with at that point in time. There are certain crimes, there used to be certain crimes, and there still are a few that make a difference in the level of charge if they have a prior conviction for a similar offense, but a lot of that went away with petty theft with priors and some other situations that were done away with. But we submit the case for the charge that they were arrested to the district attorney's office. The district attorney's office then makes a determination based on the prior arrests, whether or not there are going to be any additional charges that are filed. So we do have, we do, we can track someone's, an arrestee's background to see if they have prior arrests, but it's nothing that we include in their booking part, right? The whole booking thing gets sent to the county and ultimately to the district attorney's office for consideration for filing, and the determination is made then, whether there's going to be charges filed or not. So I don't know if that answers your question. We have access to it, but it's nothing that we add separately to the packet, because all the different law enforcement agencies, the district attorney ultimately at the end, have access to all that same file for their review and determining what, if any, charges are going to be filed or not filed.
And then do we follow, on cases that have been rejected by the DA's office, do we follow up as to a reason? Do they provide us with a reason as to why they're not being filed on?
Generally, if they're not filed, there are notes from the filing DA as to why they weren't filed, whether that's for lack of sufficient evidence or for follow-up or, these days, per a directive. So there are notes that are attached. Those are all, you know, private investigative notes that aren't accessible through, you know, public records because of the investigative nature of the notes. But there are notes most of the time on case files that come back to us from the district attorney's office listing why the charges weren't filed.
And is there anybody that we can contact over the DA's office if there is a particular case that we are concerned about and we want to get it filed?
Yes, we have direct liaisons with the adult and juvenile courts if we have a concern about a case that was rejected for some reason. And they've always been very, very open-door policy with us to discuss the status or circumstance of the case, our thoughts or beliefs on it. And we generally always work together successfully to come to resolution on it. You know, we don't always agree, but generally, there's a consensus to where we will come to some resolution on how we can better present it to them or other areas for them to consider when it comes to filing. But yes, so the short answer is we definitely have points of contact that our folks work with in the district attorney's office to address any concerns we might have on a rejected case.
And have we been successful in getting some of those cases filed? The ones that we have serious concerns about?
There's no definitive. There are cases that have been filed that we feel were, should be filed after discussion, and there were cases that weren't filed after we felt like they should be filed after discussion. So it's not, it's not 100% in any direction. Ultimately, it rests with the district attorney's office to make the final determination as to whether or not they feel a case is provable. And sometimes maybe our emotions are a little more involved because we're directly involved in the investigative portion of it. But nonetheless, it's not a definitive 100% one way or the other, but I think that there's a good partnership with us in the district attorney's office when we take a case back to them that we feel needs to be pressed or put into more of an action. Now, that's obviously outside of the DA directives cases because those are completely separate, right? We're just talking about ones that they send back to us, where they feel that it needs additional information or further conversation or more follow-up with victims or witnesses or whoever else it might be, just to solidify their feeling that they can win a case.
And do you feel like we, I'm sorry, I'm asking so many questions, but do you feel like it's been more helpful, our dialogue with our contact person at the DA's office? Have we had better dialogue? Are we seeing, has anything improved over at the DA's office from your perspective?
I think maybe there's a misconception that we're talking about here, right? We're talking about two different things in my perspective, and maybe I'm missing the point. We're talking about cases that aren't being filed because of the DA's directives, and then we're talking about cases that aren't being filed for some other reason. There's a clear delineation between those two. Those that are not being filed for some other reason, we generally are able to come to some resolution one way or the other. The directives are above and beyond any resolution with regard to that because they're based, the lack of filing is based on the directive. So I don't know if that makes sense. There's a complete different path for the two of those.
And then one of my final questions. Would you say our officers have become even busier? And maybe we don't have that information, but would you say that our officers have become busier? And if yes, do you think there's a reasoning behind that? Would this have anything to do with that, or maybe it doesn't, one doesn't correlate with the other?
Our calls for service over the years continue to grow. They grew before the directives went into place, and they'll continue to grow after. It's just the nature of law enforcement and public safety, right? Our calls continue for a number of different reasons. Some are, and some are not, crimes that are related to the directives. But I guess the short answer is, is that we respond to all of them regardless. We don't, we don't, we're not concerned with whether or not there's a directive in place. If there's a law that's being violated, we'll enforce it, and ultimately, we'll put it to the DA's office for consideration of filing. And if it's not filed, it's not filed. If it's something that we can work with outside of a directive, we'll continue to do that. But we're not going to not make an arrest or respond to a call when someone says, hey, there's someone out, for example, there's someone out in my front yard, you know, committing some illegal drug offense. We're not going to say, we're not coming because the directive says that they're not going to file it. We're still going to go. We're going to address it as a violation of law, if it is. If it's, if it's some other issue, then we'll address it appropriately that way. If an arrest is lawfully made, we will make it, and ultimately, we don't, we don't concern ourselves with what's listed in the directives as to whether or not we're going to make an arrest. That's above and beyond us. We just handle the laws as they are codified, including health and safety codes, which are arrestable offenses, misdemeanors and felonies. And as someone mentioned earlier that they weren't, but they are. So we address all those laws as we come at them, one at a time. But it's never, we never take or don't take action on something because we're, we don't think the DA's office is going to file it. You know, that's not, that's not for us to decide. We take action based on what the law says.
Thank you. Thank you so much for answering all my questions. I know I had a lot of questions. And to our police officers who are here in attendance, thank you so much for everything that you do. I know you have been extremely busy just from talking to the both of you. So I really commend you for just every day being out there. And to all of the rest of our officers, chief, please thank them on my behalf because I know they do work hard, they do work tirelessly to keep our community safe, and I know they're doing everything that needs to be done to keep our community safe. And Councilmembers Ashton and I, actually, we both met with Gascon. I don't know if you remember, but we both met with him, and we both had the same concerns. We had the concerns like, if, if, well, there's no filings on these quality of life crimes, what's that going to mean to our residents? How can we keep our neighborhood safe if we do not file on quality of life crimes? And when I say quality of life crimes, these are crimes like trespassing or petty theft or burglaries. So these are, these are all things that are important to our residents, and that's the reason why we always promote neighborhood watch groups. We always promote for our residents to be involved and engaged. So that concludes my comments. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Protem. I do have a couple of questions for Chief Milligan. Under the special directives for sentencing enhancements and allegations, how would you say the murder of Officer Ricky Galvez and the Downey triple murder suspect would be, would be handled based on these directives?
So the directives, some of the directives call for not filing enhancements, right? So when you commit a certain type of a crime, if you use a gun, there's a gun enhancement. If you're, if it's a gang-related crime or you're a gang member and commits of the crime, there's an enhancement. So the directives now call for not filing those enhancements just for the specific crime at hand, not the additional things that someone could be charged with as an enhancement to that crime. It does not deter from filing the actual crime that was committed, let's say, you know, in those examples, the homicides, first or second degree. But what it does say is that they will not, or that the enhancements are generally are not going to be filed for those, just the primary crimes.
Now, one more question. In the report... In the report that was submitted, it shows 152 cases that were rejected by the DA's office from November of last year to this year. And how is that different from previous years?
Well, those, you're referring to the case information that I shared with the council?
Yes.
Those are, that number of 152 are solely based on directives. So not that they would have all been filed previously based on evidence and witness testimony and victim testimony and all the other circumstances, but those, that 150 plus that you're referring to were specifically not filed as a result of their attachment to a specific directive. So I couldn't tell you how many of those would have actually been filed. Ultimately, I don't, I don't know that, you know, it depends on each case. But those were the numbers that were, those cases that were not filed solely because they were attached to a directive.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Well, I'm looking at the clock and looking at...
May I say something?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you. Chief, I have a question. What is the percentage of mental and substance abuse incarceration before and after Gascon?
I'm not sure I clearly understand your question. Your question is what percentage of people have mental health issues before and after Gascon took office?
And being incarcerated because they did something else, but they have mental illness.
I don't have that information. Are you speaking about the city of Downey specifically or the county?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have that information. I'm sorry, I don't have a...
I just wanted to point that I believe there is a high percentage of incarceration before Gascon because it was due to a mental illness. Or maybe they got into the system because there was a mental illness. They were just being agitated, maybe being violent. So, but there is a mental illness in, in going on. So that is my question. And how many cases do we have in the city of Downey before Gascon and after Gascon? We don't...
Unfortunately, that's not information that we track. Yeah, we don't track people's mental, mental status if you will, prior to and after the District Attorney was elected or it's nexus to crimes. There may be cases that are filed or sent for medical or mental evaluation through the court system, you know, for an evaluation for the, the mental capacity of a suspect in a crime, let's say. But that portion is done through the District Attorney's Office and through, through the court when they order an evaluation. But we don't track the number of people that have mental health issues that commit crimes.
I would like just to say I appreciate all the comments to everyone and I also appreciate the work the police of Downey has been doing. And our voters voted for Gascon and he won the majority of the votes in Downey. So we need to stand with the voters and this is the new way of thinking about justice. Instead of revenge, let's give people opportunity to improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? At this time, I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt this resolution or a vote of no confidence if there's, is there a vote?
Mayor, you made that motion?
Yes.
We'll need a second.
I'll make the second.
Okay, please vote. I can't seem to... Hang on. Trying to get there, but it's not switching. Okay, here we go.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Alvarez abstaining from the item and Councilmember Trujillo voting no.
I would like to take a three-minute break and after that, we will come back and go into our public hearing. Thank you.
Looks like we may be having a bit of an issue with my mic. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, that's actually better.
Is that better? Thank you, thank you. We, I need to take a vote to push the redistricting item for October 12th. I will make a motion.
I'll make the second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, please vote. We will, we are voting to move the redistricting item from tonight's agenda to October 12th.
I don't see it in my, I don't, I cannot see it, I cannot go.
Yeah, we are, or I am.
Oh, and I don't see it either.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Now, I need, I need to make a couple of announcements. We are going to jump into a public hearing for the Rancho Los Amigos South Campus. But before we do that, I also want to let the committee know we will take this public hearing first, and then we will be discussing the administrative report for the downtown Downey item. Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez, for, for suggesting that. And one last thing, based on the, the last vote we took, I would like to have, ask Councilmember Trujillo to please join me, and, and because you've worked with DA Gascon's office, I would like to ask you if you could facilitate a meeting with DA Gascon and include our police chief and our city manager so that we can further discuss how we can move forward with, you know, these public safety concerns. Because again, I, I want to reiterate, what he's, what he's trying to do is commendable. Our criminal justice system does need to be reformed. Councilmember Trujillo, can I count on you on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Moving now with public hearing, number one, general plan amendment, zone text and map amendment in conjunction with a new specific plan for the Rancho Los Amigos South Campus in certification of final program environmental impact report. Number one, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey approving the water supply assessment for the Rancho Los Amigos South Campus specific plan. And, number two, introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Downey for the adoption of the Rancho Los Amigos South Campus specific plan, written findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from commercial manufacturing to mixed use, amendment of certain sections of Chapter One, land use of the general plan, a zone text map amendment to change the zoning designation from R1-5000, SP-85-1, and SP-88-1 to Rancho Los Amigos South Campus specific plan, rescind specific plans SP-81-1 and SP-88-1 in certification of the final program environmental impact report for the Rancho Los Amigos South Campus specific plan. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do you have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
I will make a motion, I need a second to receive and file the publication.
Second.
A second. Okay, city manager, please vote.
Thank you, sorry about that. Madam Mayor, I will abstain from this item as my source of income due to a business relationship I have with somebody that may be involved in this project will be impacted by this item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Did everybody vote? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. City Manager Levis, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is a staff report. Looks like we're gonna have some of our consultants that are going to go ahead and give you a presentation on this particular project. I know staff has been working really hard to make sure that this comes to fruition today, and so I think it's Dave Barquist and Kimberly Horn, is that correct?
David Barquist and Kimberly Horn, pleasure to be here, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We do have a brief presentation for you, and then after we'd be happy to have questions or comments from, from you. So if I can get started, let's see here, we have the Rancho Los Amigos specific plan. If you look in the city hall, or the city boundaries, you can see it's in the southwest area of the, of the city. Here's a closer view of that. It is essentially just south of Imperial Highway, north of Gardendale Street, and you see the rail line that by its exit, and we're all very familiar with the location of that with the north and south campus of the specific plan area. This is not inclusive of the north campus, which is the rehabilitation center, is inclusive of everything south of Imperial, which is what we call the, the south campus in this case. The LA Metro had a planning grant program available to jurisdictions to address opportunities to look at transit-supported development and opportunities around rail lines, rail stations, other mobility hubs where we can maximize the ability to maximize the use of rail and transit, among other things. They provided a grant, the city wrote a, an application for the grant, was accepted, and so that's what funded this process. But also I want you to keep in mind that it is a city-initiated plan, so although the funding came from an external source, in this case, the transit-oriented grant, the whole process has been city-led and has been decisions in terms of getting to this ultimate hearing who we have, this has been through the city's initiation. There's a number of layers to the, this area, as you well are aware of, is there's a number of projects that are concurrent within the plan area. And as you can see on the screen, we have the specific plan, which is before you this evening, but there's also the West Santa Ana Branch rail extension in, in the process that's going through that we have now. There is the LA County Administrative Office expansion project that is concurrent as well in the sports complex. So all of these are layered on top of each other, as well as environmental analysis, among other things, and so there's a lot of activity that you see that. That's the idea of the specific plan, is to work within the context of those concurrent projects to make sure we can have something at the end of the day that you can have value added and work to your advantage as a community. So what is a specific plan? You think of a specific plan, it really is a, I like to call it mini zoning code with enhancements. It really is a planning and regulatory document, so it has guidance or the, the shoulds, but it also has the law, the regulations, the shalls. It has to be consistent with your general plan, and that's the action before you tonight provides for that consistency. But what's important is the plan itself is a guiding document that provides the language and the directions and the rules of the game, if you will, that subsequent development will take. So as we move through time and develop an applications, it will utilize the specific plan as a guiding document. And what it does is it ensures that the goals, objectives, and policies that you have, each subsequent project will stay true to that as you go through time. So what are the goals of the specific plan? Very straightforward, create a vibrant mixed-use multimodal community. You can see, for example, in the graphics, there are some examples of the Metro Line and some concurrent ones that they have now, but you're looking at transit-supported development, high-quality employment opportunities through the existing development that you have there, and a wide range of opportunities for a job creation within your community and the region for that matter. Looking for a variety of housing opportunities, so we look at the full spectrum of affordabilities within there, find a balance of opportunities for housing for your community. And then looking at mixed use, and when we think of mixed use, traditionally we think of a vertical orientation, that's not necessarily the case here, while that's one option, you can have it horizontally where it's the mix of uses that interact with each other to provide value added, as I had said previously. So what are the, some of the guiding principles of the, of the actual specific plan? So if you think of the, the policy context of the plan itself, it's a policy filter that all the decisions will, will fall through. These guiding principles are fairly straightforward. We talk about economic development and enhancing economic development opportunity within your community. We look at the diversity of land use and the opportunities that creates for those diversities and land uses. We look at connectivity, integration, functional relationships between land uses. So they work as a unit, functioning unit, as a, as a tool together. Accessibility, mobility, leakage, interconnectivity, getting from place, place to place. You may hear of the term first-last mile, it's connecting trips to trips and making those more convenient and, and less, less often than we need to in some cases. I talked about transit-supported development and those very residential opportunities. So these are those overall arching principles that start to form the policy filter. And how is that policy filter developed? Well, it was developed through community input engagement with your community and stakeholders. Back into late 2018 up until today, a number of meetings occurred. Those are actual pictures of a meeting. You can see a person there, and one is doing the victory sign, but I think that was because we had portos in the back of the room there, so that's, that's probably true. But we had an overflow crowd. You can see a lot of the, the notepads you see, those are little ideas from each one of your community members. And we looked at that and created the opportunity to say, how does that reflective of the community? In this case, you had a lot of folks who are interested in sports and, and the ability to provide that, that's, we had a lot of representation of that. People are interested in transit and rail, we heard all of those voices. In addition to that, we had the input of stakeholders such as Metro, the County of Los Angeles, and other stakeholders who involved in providing additional comments and conversations about those policies. So we start to put that all together and mix it up and start to create a policy document that we want to follow. And you can see here on the screen, there's four basic components to what's in that specific plan. It's the land use concept, or it says, here's a distribution and extent of land uses in your, in the plan area. The policy program, which says, these are the policies that we'll follow and be consistent with as projects come before us at, at later date. The land use and development regulations, that's the shalls or the law. So it's the regulations, how high to the extent you can do a development such as your zoning regulations you see in your zoning code. And then you have the design guidelines, which is the shoulds or an expectation of quality. When you build something here, these are the expectations that we expect as a community that you'll have inherited in your development, so you get what you always wanted, in other words. Then you have the land use concept you see here, this is the, essentially the zoning for the area, it's incorporated by reference into your, your zoning code. Looking at integrated, compact, mixed-use transit-supported development opportunities, broken down into four basic land use categories, each one of these has a description of the purpose and intent of what those mean. Each one of those has a specific development standards and regulations. You have the flex tech biomedical, regional public facilities, the transit-oriented development corridor, and community serving use. Those are the four basic land use concepts that you have within the plan area. And what you have here is that you have a lot of this activity that's happening on top of each other, so the actual net change in the area is not entirety of it because of the sports fields and other things, there's gonna be longevity to those projects. For example, a county building that's built today is probably not gonna be raised and replaced with something in the short term, maybe in the very long term. So we look at what is the area that we're infilling, if you will, as part of this plan. So you can see the net development acreage is different than what we call the 171 rough acres of the plan area. You can see on the bottom the development potential, this is an assumed estimate of what the threshold, or the top end of the threshold that we have, and that's evaluated in the environmental document. Does it mean you're gonna build that? No, it just means that we've looked at it and evaluated from that context. So it will take many years and efforts to, to reach, say, that threshold. If you pierce that threshold, you would do an additional analysis to evaluate impacts and whatnot. So what are the land use regulations? The land use regulations are intended to have high-quality design, very specific to each district. It describes the allowable uses and activities within your plan, development standards by each district, so heights, setbacks, other considerations. Special use standards, for example, you may have a particular use that has a lot of sensitivity that has particular considerations that we have to take into consideration if we were to approve. So essentially, you create in the plan those special uses and avoid you having to do a conditional process of evaluating projects. Special setbacks and step-back standards, this was based on feedback we got from the community as it relates to the relationship with the existing residential neighborhoods that you see around that, and how do we address that as changes over time. Here's one example of what that is, and it's hard to see on the screen, but you can see that over here on the right is if you have existing residential, there's standards that say if you're adjacent to residential development, you want to obstruct use so you don't have projects or other things hanging over an existing residential use. And the same thing on adjacent sees on Gardendale, for example, it's relationship, so not necessarily next to it on a, on a property line basis, but adjacent streets as well. The design guidelines are really the shoulds of the plan, this is expectation, there isn't a actual answer to what that is, a lot of interpretation, and that's purposeful. We have design professionals who are very good at finding quality solutions, but we have to give them the framework of opportunities and understanding that they can provide for the guidance. And so you can see the guidelines look at the entirety of the area and its whole context. Then we look at uses by type, so if we have residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, there's specific design elements that we want to make sure that we adhere to as we go through this process. So that is the essence of the specific plan, and as part of this process, we have to go through CEQA, as you are aware of, the process of looking at the impacts or potential impacts of the specific plan and its land use concept or its project description. That went out for a 45-day review period. What is addressed in that? Well, what is, you consider a project, and we look at the potential impacts of those considerations of, of that project, and so we look at the evaluation and accumulative impacts, or if we stack all those together, what are those potential impacts? And then we mitigate those, if there's a significant impact, we mitigate those to a less, since you may not have you, level, as you know. And then we look at different alternatives to a project, say if there's other avenues or other opportunities that we can explore. So just as a reminder, it was available for 45-day public review, as well as a specific plan from June 8th to July 23rd. We did receive comments, you can see the list on the screen, from a, a number of agencies, some union representation, and a variety of members of the community. All of those comments are of record within the document itself, the environmental document. Those are responded to and bracketed, and so each of the components of those are reflected in, in the response to comments. There are some impacts that were identified, in particular, cultural resources, historic resources, and greenhouse gas emissions, which is not un-typical for a place of, of this nature. So that gets us to the end process, we have the EIR, the completion of that, it's review and response to the responses, the comments received, the planning commission's recommendation to you for adoption, your consideration of those comments and that, and that recommendation, and at, at your pleasure, the final certification in, in addition to the other items that are before you this evening. So that concludes the presentation, we'd be happy to provide you any questions or answers to your questions at your pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate for your patience and understanding, and I appreciate the presentation. Council colleagues, anybody have any comments, questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarez.
My first question is, how do we ensure that this specific plan will include affordable workforce housing?
Councilmember, if I may?
Yes.
One of the things that we're working on citywide is our inclusionary housing ordinance with our Affordable Housing Subcommittee, councilmembers, and, and so that's a citywide approach to affect and produce more workforce and affordable housing throughout our city. In terms of the specific plan, that, that focuses on the transit-oriented village design because of that future light rail station that's coming. So we're looking at a citywide approach to increase the amount of affordable housing through a balanced approach, citywide, which will include this specific plan regardless of who owns the property and who's gonna develop it, it's that whole citywide approach.
How, what is the percentage that we're gonna be using for affordable housing in the city? Or at least in that area of Rancho Los Amigos?
Sure, that's something, once again, that we're working on with, with our inclusionary housing ordinance. So we're looking anywhere probably from 10% to 20% in terms of affordable inclusionary housing. That's gonna be fleshed out in our economic feasibility analysis that we're gonna be presenting to our council Affordable Housing Subcommittee, and once again, that's citywide.
Okay, so based on the information that I just received, I don't want to rely on the city inclusionary housing ordinance, that can require up to 20% affordable housing, we need a lot more than 20%, because this will be going to Downey families, working, working families from Downey. And I can see that the income profile that is being used says that for a medium housing income is $60,000 a year, that's what I'm seeing.
City Manager Levis, you have a...
Well, let me, let me, let me just back up in, in terms of what this document is and, and where we're at. Really, this is, the, the environmental document, this is a zoning document, basically lays out what types of uses can go in various locations in the city. That's what it does. It's for, and so typically what happens is that the affordability issues that come up, once that land is being developed, we're, we're talking with the county right now, right? Those items are brought to us at another time when, when, then we discuss how many units, what's the makeup of those units. Right now, you have a zoning all throughout the, throughout the city. Nowhere in the city do you have affordability, nowhere, you know, and, and the reason for that is, some of that is historical because it's worked against people, right? So historically, people would, cities would zone out certain groups, right? They would redline certain groups and say, we don't want that particular person in our community. So those types of things are not in this document, it's a neutral document when it comes to that. So all it's talking about is what kind of uses can go in a particular area, it's kind of the plan, really, and then what happens subsequently through that is that once that property is developed, there's a development agreement. That development agreement, no different than we did a development agreement, for example, when we did Kaiser or when we did Promenade, there are development agreements that you come back, and at that juncture is when we start then negotiating how many affordable units the city council would like to have at that particular location. You never want to tie your hands on that, and I'll tell you why, is because, let's assume that you were able to have a zoning affordability, which we don't have any place else in the city. There's, there's nowhere in the city where you've actually designated an affordability mix, right? But if you did there, in this particular case, let's say that you, you know, we, we happen to do that, you know, the, the consultants can tell me, I don't, I don't know, I'm not familiar with any... the consultants can tell me, "I don't know, I'm not familiar with any cities that do it that way, where they have actually affordability tied to their zoning," but I'm ensuring it may happen. But the reason that typically cities don't want to do it is you don't want to tie your hands because you don't know what's coming down the pike, right? You don't know what the future holds. So in the event, for example, that you happen to get a great developer that comes in and says, "Look, I could do some workforce housing, some really, you know, low-income, you know, housing there, mixed with some moderate-rate housing, mixed with some market-rate housing, but I may not give you as many housing units as you want, but I will give you a sustainable community where people will be able to live and work there, and that reduces your carbon footprint and has a bunch of other things, you know, provides jobs and things of that nature." So what you want to do is you want to balance those things when they come before you, as opposed to dictating what they are now, because all of those items will be coming before you. All those items will be coming before you. All this does is just lay the blueprint down.
So I just, yeah, because I mean, already Aldo said it, it's going to be up to 20%. So I...
No, that's actually, I'm sorry, but that's, what he's referring to is an inclusionary housing that applies to the city as a whole. That's separate and apart from a development agreement that will come before the city council. So you could still have your inclusionary housing and still have the affordability issues that you have. So they're layered on top of each other.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
We want more than 20%.
We only want, one, look, one of the big mandates, I think, from the councils we've heard is that we have to do more on the affordability side of things. And we have a mandate, now even from SCAG, to create more units, but we also want to make sure that there are segments of our community that can afford to have housing there. Also, it's important to always look at the mix of the housing units down there, because let's say you have 700 units down there. You don't want 700 units of low-income units all concentrated in one area, right? Because then you're concentrating all your income units. People do best, and the outcomes for the residents that live there do best when they are commingled with moderate, market-rate, affordable, and all those people live together because those resources, let's face it, those resources come in great numbers to those communities that are active, right? And so you want to be able to make sure that everybody is activated in that neighborhood, and that means every income level. But you can determine at what point which income levels and how many that you want when that comes forward.
Thank you for clarifying that.
To be true, affordable housing, that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
And it's got to be a very strategic and balanced approach. Right? Thank you. I don't have any comments, questions?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So kind of following up on that, that kind of sparked a question. So Aldo, and I hate to put you on the spot because I know, but I think this is in your wheelhouse. So as far as the RENA numbers, 6,000 and some odd, what percentage of that are we supposed to allocate to affordable housing?
I'm going to turn to Crystal, who's the subject matter expert on our housing element.
Perfect.
I sincerely apologize. That number should be fresh in my head. The 6,525 number is definitely there. We do have a separate allocation for each. We have the different income categories. There are, there's the market, there's moderate, there's low income, and then there's below-average. And so there is a good number, not quite half, but I believe the number is probably somewhere around 2,000 of our 6,525 units. And I apologize, that's an approximation, but it should be close to that number.
And that's kind of what I'm looking for, because I know we're not going to, you know, and, you know, to Councilmember Alvarez's question, I think it's good not to tie our hands necessarily, but at least let's make an honest effort to try to keep what we can to keep that mix, but close to that percentage, because we have to hit not just the total number of housing, but the housing in each category, too. So if there's a conscious effort that we can make with this plan and in the eventual plan that comes to us to help hit that, I think that'd be really the goal. I think that's kind of leading to what you were asking, and I think that's really what we should be shooting for, because these are...
Madam Mayor, if I can follow up to that exact point. That is one of the primary goals of the housing element process that we're going to, and it's one of the directives that we have from HCD, is that we don't want to create areas where we're concentrating and showing this is where we don't, you know, the area we don't care about, and we're going to put it in a pocket. We want to distribute it throughout the city, and that's one of the goals that we're following right now, to make sure we're making that available citywide, so that we have availability for all these different income levels throughout the city, and all of our residents can enjoy that.
Thank you.
And, you know, to clarify, I know we speak in a lot of acronyms, and so for members of the audience and those watching as via Zoom or YouTube, RENA stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And so again, that, you know, those were the mandates that we've been talking about, the over 6,000 units and what we're discussing. And again, our apologies, we will try to use less acronyms, or if we use the acronyms, let our residents know what we're talking about. Thank you. If anybody else, if no one else has any questions or comments...
Actually, I do have a comment. So I know this includes the veterans' housing over and off of Garfield and, what is it, Gardendale?
Gardendale.
Gardendale. So once this all gets approved timeline, how long will it take before we see anything happening over there?
Well, this process is going to take a second reading, and then the CEQA process is going to take probably another 30 to 45 days to wrap up as well. We've been active with the developer of that site. The county supervisor's office is very interested in getting that project started. And so I would assume that the county, who's actually running point with the developer, is going to be in our office probably within about 60 to 90 days after that with plans, and then we'll start to move forward with that.
Okay, because I'm really excited about this project that we've been discussing since back in 2017, I believe. So this is really a good project for our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Protem, I agree. Ceric, like Duarte, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor. We actually... Did you want to go ahead and open this for public comment?
Well, I first, I was going to make a motion and get a second to receive and file the publication, and then open it up for public comment.
Yes, we took the motion at the beginning of the item.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me. I will then now open the item up for public comment. Now, did we receive any written correspondence regarding this item?
Yes, we did. Did you want me to read the...
No, we'll go ahead.
Just give you the...
Just tell us the numbers, please.
Yes. So we received a total of 16 written comments, 15 in favor of the item, and one in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Now, members of the public wishing to address the council, you may now come forward.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, those copies of those written comments were provided to the council and are also on the back of the room on the table.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding us again. I know I have the stack right in front of me, and as we've said at the beginning, the rest of those letters are also in the back for the public. Good evening. You may proceed now.
So, affordable commingled shit, right? Let me give direction and language to the MOU. How do you like that acronym? Shit. Because based on Dave and Metro and Gateway Cities shit for affordability on 62.5 shit acres, the shit acres, as Ashton pointed out, shit doesn't fall on behalf of those who are falling under the affordable housing. That's why shit on the general plan of a new specific plan shit like shit Royball Allern and shit assholes from the Board of Supervisors should shit their way over here and shit a final resolution to provide the language for affordable shit housing for those who can want and live off of shit Garfield and shit Gardendale, as Flaca Pacheco was excited to mention, veterans, as she grandstands whether or not Rancho Los Alamo South Campus Specific Plan will work for veterans. Well, Flaca Pacheco, you don't know shit about commingling...
Please direct your comments to me, Mr. Herman.
Well, she is the mayor, lady, and so are you, so I'm directing it to the mayor. So in the absence of the mayor and in absence of the pro-mayor...
I'm right here, Herman.
I'm directing it to the fucking mayor of this affordable 62.5 fucking acres for quality of life, efficiencies, and adaptabilities for economic growth in this goddamn fucked-up hole you put us all in to struggle and live in America, California. Fuck you, Gavin Newsom, you stupid motherfucker. So, again, zone text, MOU, and map amendments does not justify whether or not people can have affordable housing, city manager jackass. So before you interrupt me, mayor of mayors of Gateway Cities on this shit, really, look what the city of Los Angeles did with all this shit with Metro, building these huge complexes for 5,000 people to live in like in Pasadena, Cerritos, and the dumb niggers can't afford the 3,000 a month affordability. And no one, I said no one, especially a dumb nigger like you, can really believe that, because if that were the truth, all this shit would have accessible access for all. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, Mike Greenspan, and in the words of Paulie Shore, I'm back. Well, these projects are kind of fun to look at, because, as I've said before in other places, basically, you have a carbon copy, and you just change a few characters here or there, letters or whatever, numbers, but it's basically the same. Now, let's look at Metro. Oh, Metro's fun. After all, they're great at putting out billboards and advertisements about their line being completed. Wait till that happens here, and then it doesn't get completed on the time that you're talking about. The extension of the goal line into East LA, oh, it was supposed to happen being finished in July 2008. And all the ads were out there, except there's just one problem. It didn't get finished until November 2008. But you see, when they get those billboards, it's a 30-day lead time. So if they realize at the last minute that this thing's not finished, tough shit. They are stuck by contract to have the signs, and it looks very embarrassing to tout the metro line that's going to open up that really doesn't open up for a few months later. Wait till that happens here in Downey, because those supervisors that are on the metro board, you know, bimbos like Han, Mommy Barger, and others that are just clueless, and Mayor Garcetti, who spends the whole metro meeting thinking about what he's going to do with his boyfriend Glenn Dake that night, and not thinking about the project that's going to be failing and it's to be completed on time, under, on budget, on budget would be good, under budget would be better, but it's just money going down this black hole. I mean, that's just a transident. Now, as Mr. Herman mentioned, the affordability, yes, 3,000 a month is going to be affordable. It's affordable for who? Steve Ballmer, who owns the Clippers and called that a bargain at $2 billion? Do we all have a couple of billion dollars to throw around for bargains? And now they, sometimes cities are changing their terminology to, from affordability to low income and very low income. But we're still not giving any specific numbers, and they're probably going to be very close to Mr. Herman's numbers or more. Yeah, that's real affordable. Boy, I guess I needed to take different math classes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for the time. My name is Zeke Sandoval. I'm the Public Policy Manager for PATH, People Assisting the Homeless. Madam Mayor, Protem Pacheco, we're very excited to hear your excitement and be sharing it. We are very grateful for the opportunity to look at these new 700 units coming online. Homelessness is, by definition, a lack of homes. So when more homes come online, when more homes get built, our ability as a homeless service provider is added to, and our ability to house more people, get more folks into affordable supportive housing is only added to. So we're very excited about this project, and we're thrilled to be a good partner. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Ivan. Thank you for being here.
Hello, of course. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, pleasure to be here. Ivan Sulik, Homeless and Housing Deputy for Supervisor Han and a proud Downey resident myself.
Yay!
Just wanted to be here to talk in favor of the Rancho Specific Plan and to thank Aldo, the staff, the consultants, all for the hard work that they put into this, working with our county staff to bring what is presented to you tonight, to make that happen. So just want to thank them, and really to speak about the opportunity we have here. I mean, this sets a framework of what is possible in Rancho South. I mean, currently, what we have now, as you know, is vacant buildings, raccoons, coyotes. We've had multiple fires. Literally, our office gets calls from paranormal activity filmmakers looking to do films. Talk about having a ghost town in your community. But with the metro station coming in, with our beautiful PATH Ventures Veterans Project for veterans and homeless veteran families, in addition to the county being the spearhead in developing the rest of Rancho South, we have a lot of property down there. And Councilmember Alvarez, you know, we are looking to do and committing to do affordable housing. Mayor, city manager, we're looking to do market-rate housing. We're looking to do retail and commercial. There's great opportunity down here with the metro line coming into Downey. So with that, we hope that you will approve the specific plan tonight, that we will work together in developing this property. And so on behalf of Supervisor Han, we hope that you will vote in favor of the specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
do. It really is. It's disgusting. Anyways, build some houses, some homes for veterans, please. We do have some houses that we are required to build, housing by the state. This actually provides some of the numbers that we need to fulfill that, so take this easy win, take this easy vote, because it's the least you can do after the other crap you just pulled.
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's been a long night so far, so congrats on hanging in there. I'm just, my name is Cynthia Wong. I'm with PATH Ventures. I'm just here to speak in favor of the adoption of the specific plan. I'm an...
And it's been a long night so far, so congrats on hanging in there. I'm just, my name is Cynthia Wong. I'm with PATH Ventures. So I'm just here to speak in favor of the adoption of the specific plan. I'm an advocate of affordable housing, and this is a great opportunity to bring in more of that to the city of Downey. You know, I hope that you all consider approving the resolution tonight, and I think that this is the right step forward toward more affordable and equitable living. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
This is a great opportunity for us, as a city, to, yes, work collaboratively and in partnership with the county. This project, the Rancho South Campus, will be a legacy project that will, that will identify the south of Downey for generations to come. And I believe we need to continue to be very strategic. And we know what the demands are at hand in terms of the regional housing allocation mandates. We also, my council colleagues and I are supportive, of course, of affordable housing. And again, we need to be very strategic and make sure we have a mixed plan use, because that area, the south of us, needs to be able to have that good mix, as was presented during this public hearing presentation. We need to be able to attract strong retail. And with the rail and the green line going by there, it's going to be such a great opportunity for the city and for the region to expand and evolve. Certainly, that area that has remained vacant for many years is, it's due time. And I'm very excited to see this project come forward. And I'm also equally excited to move forward and finally break ground and bring forth the veterans' housing and with wraparound services that we've been discussing for a number of years. These are things that are needed in the city of Downey. And again, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. But also, I want to make sure that the community at large understands and the cities that we share borders with, you know, Southgate in particular, that as a city, we are not only looking to just develop a land for the sake of development, but we are looking to be strategic to make sure we have that mixed land use and make sure that the right component of commercial and retail brings about so we can have a winning formula for that particular sector of our community. Having said that, I will make a motion, and I need a second to introduce this ordinance.
I'll second.
Actually, to entertain a motion and a second to adopt the resolution first.
Okay, I'll make the second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from the item.
Thank you. Now I will entertain a motion in a second to introduce this ordinance.
I'll second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from the item.
Thank you. As I've said before, thank you for your presentation. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, I will have to now leave. Madam Mayor Pro Tem will continue with the meeting. I do have a family emergency.
Thank you, Ivan, for joining us. And thank you for those from PATH for also joining us.
Thank you. See you later.
Take care. Hope everything goes well. If there's anything you need.
Thank you.
The next item that we will be discussing is an administrative report. This would be item number 12. Discuss and provide direction to staff regarding the COVID-19 temporary outdoor dining program. And I believe we have someone that needs to abstain, Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes, I need to abstain as I own property in that area.
Councilmember Trujillo owns some, two commercial properties in the downtown area where the, partly where the dining program is happening. So he'll abstain for that one, but he'll rejoin us later.
Eventually. City Manager Livas, do we have somebody presenting a staff report for this item?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, we do have a staff report that will be presented by Aldo Schindler.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Council. As a request from Councilmember Ashen a couple of months ago, I'm here to provide an update on our outdoor dining parklet program. As we know, due to the global pandemic back in June of 2020, we established the program, and that was to assist businesses that couldn't provide service inside their restaurants and to create that service outdoors. It was a new program, so we were then back in front of council a couple of months later, in August of 2020, to update that program.
Aldo, can you do me a big favor? Oh, there you go. Thank you. You can go ahead.
Yes, and so after the introduction of the program in June of 2020, we were back in front of council in August of 2020. Those were turbulent times back there, and we were learning as we were going in terms of establishing these programs. And so we came back and we removed some of the standards, which were too burdensome for businesses. We also extended it for another 180 days and then also aligned it with any limitations or extensions that the state was going to approach. And then fast forward to June of this summer, Governor Gavin Newsom extended the outdoor dining till the end of this calendar year. All right, here's an example of some outdoor parklets within our community. Currently, we've got 37 restaurants that participate in our permit program. We surveyed them and asked them, you know, how they thought they're going to proceed into the future with their outdoor dining. 10 of them have already removed their outdoor parklets or are planning to do so. And that's mostly just because of their internal operations. Their kitchens weren't big enough. Their restaurants weren't laid out to provide this type of operation. Their staffing was spread thin. You heard the news in terms of how hard it was to find people during COVID and even now and with some of the layoffs. So it just wasn't working out for them. The remaining 27 want to keep some component of it, and that is only based on uncertainty. And that's based on the roller coaster ride with the variants and so forth that we've been experiencing through the pandemic. So based on that uncertainty, they'd like to keep it. There's also a small fraction that have figured out how to manage their kitchens and operate with a dual capacity with their existing kitchen and their staffing. So you still have those that want to keep it. In our downtown, we have nine parklets. There's the, a photo of what's happening on Downey Avenue. And then these are the parklets that we have on Second Street, both on the east and west side of those streets. And we also surveyed other cities to see what was happening there so we can kind of get a good radar in terms of what was going on. So you see that the first three cities, Buena Park, Lakewood, and Orange, don't have any deadline to remove them. And then you see the next three, Anaheim, Cerritos, and Fullerton, they've extended them into early 2022. And then the next three, Lumride, Pasadena, and Whittier, they haven't made a decision yet in terms of extending it to the end of this calendar year. And then Brea stands alone in that it removed all of their outdoor dining this summer. And we have a close partnership with our Downtown Property Owners Association, which is a district at Downey. So they've met a couple of times at the board level and discussed the topic and provided us some suggestions. There's nine suggestions, and in order to consolidate our responses to those suggestions, I inserted some text here. So we just have a difference of opinion on three of the nine suggestions. So on the first one, for instance, they're suggesting that we have a minimum clear path of six feet on the sidewalks where the parklets exist. So our federal ADA requirement's a lot for four feet of a clear way. So that's our standard, and so that's what we think is appropriate as opposed to the six feet. Also, they suggest that participating businesses have an active business license, which we agree, an encroachment permit from our Public Works Department, which we also agree, as well as proof of insurance, which we agree, and then adding the city and the district as additionally insured. And there's a bit of a typo there. We want to keep the city added as additionally insured. Those parklets in the downtown are occurring in our right of way, but we don't see a reason to add the district as additionally insured. And then also, the noise that's occurring on the outdoor dining, that's been a little bit of an issue. And we're going to continue to work with our police department and our code enforcement department to see how best we can manage that. Also, the district has its own maintenance crew. You may have seen them in their orange jerseys picking up trash and cleaning the downtown area. Well, they want to keep those folks in the public rights ways and not on the private properties. And so they want to make sure there's clarity there. And then also, the participating restaurants should only be allowed to use their frontages. As I mentioned, back in June of 2020, when we jumped into this, there was a lot of different things going on. And some of the businesses sought the approval from their neighbors to expand their outdoor dining. They did so by getting a written confirmation from their neighbors that they were able to do so. So we allowed it. Fast forward to today, you have their neighbors that want that space back out in front of them, either retailers or restaurants that didn't participate previously. So the district is seeking to gain support from the city to only have those parklets out in front of that specific restaurant storefront. And this is a long sentence here. What the gist is, is the district would like to reintroduce parking where there is no parklet in front of that restaurant. So in front of the Masonic Lodge, there's no dining, so they'd like to reopen that parking. Same thing with the other side of the street. And that's best discussed with these images. So the top image is looking northbound from Second and Downey. And so you've got active parklets there with K rails. The bottom photo is Downey and Third Street looking southbound. So you can see on both sides of the street, you've got K rails, but you don't have any parklets. And so now that the retailers have customers coming back or the service businesses that have customers coming back, they would like to open that up and provide access to parking. What they would also like to see is any of the parklets that remain, that they also continue to be protected with K rails on those sides that would be exposed. And that's something that we support as well. And then number eight is the district is suggesting that outdoor parklets only remain on Downey Avenue and not on Second Street. And their experience has been is that the parklets on Second Street are causing congestion, specifically with service and delivery trucks that come in. Previously, those service and delivery trucks would park on Second Street in those open spaces or the alley. And so that's not happening now. And so it's pushing the service and delivery trucks into the alleys and into the streets and causing congestion. And so hence, they're asking for that as well. And then the district also would like the parklets to go to the end of this calendar year. Our suggestion is that you carry them out to the end of next calendar year. So with that, staff is seeking direction from the council. Number one, to extend the program citywide through December 31 of 2022. That would require staff coming back at the next meeting with an amendment to our emergency order or a resolution. And we can work with the city attorney's office as to what vehicle works best for staff in the council. And then if we do so, much like we're doing tonight, we'd come back with a check-in. We can do that in June or a sooner date if you like. But once again, come back with a check-in, just like tonight, to let you know how it's going. And then also, consider the recommendations from the district with the edits on those three points from staff. And so that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any council members?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if I may? So quickly, if we do nothing, when does this expire?
Let's see, that's attached to the order, so it would expire at the end of this calendar year. It's aligned to what the state's doing.
Okay, so then basically, we want to see how this is going to go for another year?
Yes, the intent is to help our businesses. And so quite frankly, you know, I've spoken to Radke and some other folks, and you know, that crystal ball is really, really muddled in terms of where we're going to be with the pandemic, you know, in the next six months and how we're going to be able to react. So much like the businesses that didn't want to pull in, their parklets, based on uncertainty, we would like to support them to be able to extend it out.
So if there are other questions, I don't want to.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So like, my observation, looking at some of these, like, some of them are kind of done nice and some of them are kind of done eh. And then like the K rails, I thought we were going to kind of do something with the K rails to make them look kind of not so K rail-y. I thought we were going to kind of paint or cover them up or something, and that kind of hasn't happened. So I don't know if there's something we can do, because I've seen things in other cities where they get like people to paint them or something, just to, we can, you know, on a slow day in the city, we can kind of shut it down and shut the street down and paint part of them to kind of at least make them look more decorative or have the businesses do something, you know, for it. I don't know if that's a possibility. But going back to kind of how they look, you know, we don't have any standards for it. We just kind of said, okay, well, you know, we're in an emergency and we're going to give you this space and go ahead and use it. And so then you get like some things that are kind of done nice and some things that are like eh. And I don't know, is there a way that we can kind of get standards to some of what they're doing to at least make it have, one, a presentable look, but more importantly, make sure that safety rules are being applied so that in the event of some sort of emergency, that, you know, people have a way to escape that area safely without, you know, causing too much issue or, you know, or having some structural issues with whatever they've put up to make sure that that's safe in the event of an earthquake is not going to collapse on people and hurt people? Can we do that?
Well, that's actually right in our wheelhouse. We're all about standards and regulation. It's balancing that. And so the challenge in those early days of the pandemic is people scrambling to do something and lack of finances. So when you add those standards, you're adding to building costs. So we agree 100%. We'd love all of the parklets to look like an extension of the building facade, to carry on that design from the building facade out into the street. That's a costly effort. What we can do is try to find a middle ground so that we get the aesthetic that we want without overburdening the restaurant in terms of cost with that.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if I may?
Yes.
So the other thing, as Aldo just indicated, you know, we were sort of moving quickly. We actually discussed about covering those K rails and looking at, if we can do that, and we certainly could. But then we looked at the cost of doing that versus balancing giving, you know, some more money to the businesses in order for them to survive. So we opted for the businesses to survive. Now, the other thing is that we're in a position now where we're talking about potentially making some of these more permanent, right? So had we done that, now we'd be ripping those things out, right? So that's, now we're in a position that we had, we have some time. We've looked, you know, we have a look back on this. We can take a look at where these things are going to be potentially more permanent. Some cities, what they've done is said, hey, you know what? We're just going to close off the street. From here forward, it's going to be a closed location to foot traffic only. And so they made the investment to just, you know, rip off the bandit, and they did that. In this particular case, we've morphed and we've looked at this in a way that it gave us some time to sort of see what works. It gave the district and the business to see what worked. So now we're in a position that we can actually do something that's more permanent and looks nicer as we move forward.
And so we can incorporate. Sorry, we can incorporate that in what we're asking right now, because that's kind of what I would really like to see.
Yeah, absolutely. I think what we can do that as we move forward, once we know if this gets approved. Now we have exactly what we need to sort of really try to do some enhancements out there to make sure that it looks nice.
I wanted to say, yeah, I wanted to echo what my colleague Sean Austin said about painting the, how do you call them? Yeah, the concrete itself. Yeah, the concrete itself. And also to see if we can have it definitely and change Downey Avenue and maybe just close Downey Avenue between Firestone and where the church Catholic church is for the future reference. I don't know if we can do that.
Sure, you know, that was bannered about, and the district didn't support that, and that's why we didn't close it. And that's why the K rails actually run on Downey from Second to Third. So if anything, they'd like to keep it open. And we're in support of that as well. It was, once again, something that was talked about a lot early during COVID.
Is there any way we can do, like, this type of thing of Santa Monica that it's closed?
Well, I think that's what Aldo's referring to, is that we looked at, you know, closing those two, closing Downey Avenue to pedestrians only. But one of the issues that you have is, for example, you have portals there that brings in a lot of traffic. They already back up onto Firestone Boulevard sometimes, so you need, you know, that access through. And now the businesses in that area don't want it closed. So we're essentially referring to the businesses, and do you see what they want, and this is what they want.
I think we should go forward and to look into this for next year, and just leave it how it is.
I remember we had actually shut it down between Second and Third, so we did do that last year.
We did.
And we didn't see that many people walking around, and it didn't really help traffic and made traffic worse. And actually, what we have now is better for traffic flow. At least, that's what we found.
Yeah, I mean, part of that issue is, I think, related to just the fact that at that time when COVID was happening, it was really still, I mean, not that it's not scary still, but people were more not just go, people were more not going out because you just didn't know. And now we kind of have an acceptance in the fact that, okay, if we follow these proper procedures and we do the vaccinations or, you know, socially, you know, we can kind of manage to a point, you know, our expectations and not, not, I see what you're saying, and I think it'd be a good idea to look at maybe closing that off, but not as a permanent thing, but like for, like, weekends or something, or maybe just, you know, like, to have special events like we've done in the past, like the food festival and that, and purchasing bollards. I know we had that conversation. But yeah, like, when we did it then, I don't know if that was really a true representation of what we could possibly do with that section, but right now, I mean, I still think we should allow the traffic to go through. Personally, I think that that's the best thing, but I know the one thing with the K, having the K rails block off that northern part, I think is kind of not necessary, and any use of parking spaces we can have would be greatly appreciated, especially for the businesses that aren't using the parklet setup, so.
So I just want to say the last thing. I have talked and spoke, speak with others, city business owners, and they are actually asking to have it permanently open, the outdoor dining. So hopefully, we can look into this in the future to have it openly, permanently. Thank you.
So I just want to ask a couple of questions. So it is possible to open up some of those parklets to allow for parking? There's no danger to the rest of the parklet? So say, for instance, in front of Ola and it would be Joseph's, if we opened up the parklets in front of the assistance league, that's possible?
Yes, and that's the goal. We consulted with our public works department. Delfino can chime in if he likes, but we didn't receive any objection in terms of opening up those parking spots and keeping other parklets there.
How about the restaurant that's located off of Second Street, the burger place?
Sure, that's LA Buns.
LA Buns.
Sure. Now, the recommendation from the downtown district is to remove those parklets, those two on Second Street, which Bastards has one and LA Buns has one, and then the third one, which is on Ola, which is on the east side of Downey Avenue on Second Street.
And have we received any input from those restaurants?
Well, the district, I believe they have. The president of the district is here tonight, so I think he'd be better prepared to answer that.
Okay. And I do agree that we do need to continue the outdoor dining with the Delta variant and some people just feeling, just not comfortable with indoor dining at the time, even for those who are vaccinated. I think it's important for customers to have the choice so that they can go to a restaurant and they don't have to feel uncomfortable with being around other people. I think that's extremely important, so I do appreciate having the outdoor dining continue.
I just wanted to clarify. So LA Buns, are they asking them to remove them?
The district is recommending that the parklets on Second Street, the three of them, the one in front of LA Buns, Bastards, and Ola be removed.
And what is the suggestion from the city to do it?
Well, staff supports the downtown district. They're the people that are talking, the property owners are the ones that meet on a regular basis, so we support their direction.
I don't agree. Sorry.
I don't know if we could have the president come up and maybe talk to us and let us know and give us some feedback as to what the business owners said. Maybe he can give us feedback as to what Ola, Bastards, and LA Buns also said. I'd like to hear that.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name's George Villa, and I'm the president of the DDIA, so I'll do the best I can to answer your questions.
So we just want to see what input was provided by those two, three restaurants that would be impacted if we took away those, the outdoor Downey or the, their, the parking outlets for their restaurant usage off of Second Street.
Bastards and Ola's don't have any issues because they have sufficient already. I mean, they have the front and in the back on both of them. The only one that probably would lose a little bit, and I'm sure if they could keep it, they would want to, would be LA Buns. But for the other two, it wasn't an issue. I mean, if you looked at Bastards, they don't even use it as much, it's right behind them already.
So I spoke with the LA owner today, and to be honest with you, he really wants to keep it.
Yeah. It would be his preference, I'm sure.
And I have...
And we spoke to everybody, and we did the same thing. I mean, you know, it's, you know, you guys have a tough job every day, but in other words, you can't fulfill everybody's needs. But we did speak to everybody, and the consensus was to eliminate them on Second Street.
Okay. The other question is, is how can implement bollards? Bollards?
That would be a Gilbert question. Gilbert?
Well, actually, this is something that Sean has brought up, and one of the things that we had discussed over the years is creating these bollards so that you would be able to close off the street when you wanted to. At that time, I think it was council member Vasquez and Saab, and I can't remember the others, that decided to hold off and wait for the district, because the district is the one that would decide how they would use the money that they generate, and that let them decide whether or not that was something they wanted to do. So one of the reasons that the district was created is for the businesses to be self-sufficient and decide their own, determine their own desire for that particular area in the downtown, and to help make that more successful. So I'll let him answer, and I don't know if they've discussed it at all.
Yeah, no, we're all in agreement. We would like to be able to close down the street for events.
Right.
We don't want to close it all day, and we've looked at different possibilities on how to do it, with a cost-effective way. I recently sent some pictures out of Ventura, and they actually have bollards that they roll out and they put out there to close it up. So yeah, we're in agreement. We want to do that.
Last question. So the majority of owners of those small businesses on Second Street and Downey Avenue, do they came with the idea of saying, you know, I don't want it, or maybe I do keep, I do really want to keep the outdoor dining? Like, how many of them say yes? How many of them say no?
I mean, I don't have a tally exactly how it was. You know, it wasn't just them, it was all the other, you know, it was, it was a meeting, a Zoom meeting where we had multiple people call in, so I can't really remember faces or names to tell you, but there was a lot of different opinions. It wasn't just the restaurants that were on the call, there were some of the other businesses in the area. So the overall consensus was to, you know, eliminate the parklets on Second.
Mr. Martinez, please.
I don't have no more questions, but...
So you meant, one of the things that was kind of brought up was, you know, issues with the delivery trucks, is that, so what time are, I mean, do we have them locked in at a certain time when they're going to be able to access that street or not? Or, I mean, this is just more of a question, because I want to know.
Yeah, I don't know about the delivery issues, but I don't know. Aldo, do you know anything about it?
Yeah, we weren't given any time of day in terms of if they were happening, morning, midday, or evening. It was just the issue when those deliveries are occurring because of lack of access due to the parklets on Second Street, they were causing congestion into the alleys and the surrounding businesses, and that was the feedback that we got.
And so would they normally be, like, unloading at where some of those parklets are at, or is it just the trucks going through in general?
They would normally be unloading where those parklets are at.
Yeah, when you have the trucks going through, I mean, this is an observation, it has nothing to do with the DDIA, but I'm in that area walking all the time. When you have the trucks go there to deliver, it really just stops traffic. There's times you just have to wait, and it's one car at a time. It's pretty common, I see it.
I see it all the time.
Yeah. And I can, and another issue too, I think we always have to be conscious of, too, of some of these parklets, they're pretty close to sidewalks, and I think it's up to, I've seen it become a pedestrian hazard. People are walking out. And that could be mitigated by just moving them back, but I mean, some adjustments.
Other comments, questions?
No questions.
Thank you so much. We will now open it up to a public comment. And you'll still be here in case we have additional questions.
Yeah, I'll sit here, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open this item up for public comment. Before that, City Clerk Duarte, have we received, or actually, have we received any written correspondence?
No, Mayor, no, Mayor Perton, we did not for this item.
Okay. So members of the public wishing to address the council regarding this item may now come forward and form a line. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council regarding this item, item number 12. Our first speaker, Mr. Herman?
So we're having an issue with the K rails there on the corridor. Well, I don't think it's a significant problem. Can't we adjust? I mean, look at Flaca Pacheco, she adjusted, now she's the mayor. Where's the pro mayor to discuss this COVID issue? Where's the jackass idiots from Sacramento to give you guys more money, to give these restaurants and business owners more money to survive while you jackasses put your K rails on the sidewalk and streets to prevent customers like me to want to stop or drive by or cruise by and check out the bitches at Joseph's? Or what about the Bastards, mommy? Don't you like to eat your burger at Bastards, mommy Pacheco? I like my greasy burgers, mommy. How about you? You don't like greasy burgers, huh, mommy? As skinny as you are, you should try one. That way, you don't have to look like from meta. What? I'm talking about food, bro. I'm talking about coronavirus. Talking about the corridor. I'm talking about what we should actually do to create new business on the corridor.
Mr. Herman.
What, mommy?
Stay on topic. I don't want, I don't want to have to warn you.
Well, maybe you should start warning me.
Mr. Herman.
Warning number one now.
Warning number one.
Don't threaten me by warning. Give me the first warning, and I'll give it back, or even.
Mr. Herman, on topic, you've been warned.
Yes, mommy, I'll talk about COVID-19 regarding the business corridor between Second and First. Ever since we started having COVID, I stopped going to eat out because I'm afraid like Ashton to pick up some type of COVID-19 disease. And I'm afraid that the children in my family would probably get sick from Delta as some dumb bitch brought it up when, after all, not all of us are afraid to die from COVID. Look at the idiot speaking at the mic. He hasn't died or caught the fucking bug of COVID-19, and he still goes out and eats and buys food with his EBT card. The Sacramento niggers gave him an extra bud in the money. Oh, no, not bud in, it's booty of money to buy COVID-19 foods. So when you go out, mommy, mommy Flaca, are you listening? Listen, mommy Flaca, I'm really trying to stay on topic. But by the way, well, due to the timeframe of speakers behind me, I'm going to give you my last penny, one second. Shove it! [beep]
What is that? A bunch of businesses running themselves, making decisions about other businesses in the Second Street that don't even belong to them? You heard from one of the council members, say she already spoke to LA Buns, they kind of want to keep their stuff. Makes sense to keep outdoor dining during a pandemic where one of the variants is highly transmissible and is killing a lot of Americans, particularly people who have died here in Just extend the, pass the extension, and I recommend that council members, if you are going to take this pandemic seriously, you should also consider that this is actually going to be the way and standard of the future. Pandemics are going to become a norm. If Downey wants to be successful in providing their businesses all the tools that they need, Downey is going to have to get used to being flexible enough to move in and out of pandemic states, which means that this, this transition should be easily accessible and should be provided to all businesses. That's the future. More pandemics, more diseases coming. So you want to empower these businesses. To do otherwise, too, I would even go as far as to say that new businesses that get established in Downey should really consider having an outdoor aspect to it. That's if you really want to protect our community. Other than that, I don't even know why you're entertaining other businesses like that, other than they, they're your donors. Thank you.
It's been a few minutes since I've been back here. Anyway, now, here we are, once again, with this panic thing about the COVID. I mean, didn't you know 120 million people have died worldwide, according to some senile guy running for president at the time named Joe Biden? But the problem is, it's not true. We're nowhere near it. Now, obviously, it's a disease. Perhaps the Chinese have a little bit more on the ball than us, because, you see, they got through SARS, and I remember them on the, riding the metro with their mask. So they're very proficient at putting masks on. So this, and when talking about food problems, who was it that had, Chipotle years ago had problems? So this isn't their first rodeo either. Now, we're, we're all panicking and everything else, and somehow we got a good idea. On a nice, warm day, you go out, eat outdoors. Now, when everything was takeout and you couldn't have outdoor dining or à la fresco, people were eating in their cars and eating in their parking lots and everything else. They were taking it out, and I was one of those too, because I go out to eat all the time. And what if the restaurants like this room, and it's ice cold, colder than a witch's tit, and you go up to that cunt Lisa and ask her to turn off the air, and she said, "Don't turn on the air." "Don't talk to me."
Please stay on topic.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, the problem is, you go into some places, and it's cold as can be, so, it's nice to be outdoors where it's a little warmer, now, there's cities like Washington DC that have, for years, have had outdoor dining when, when spring comes around, and it works very well, it's nice to see them try it out here, especially when you just have, want to be outdoors, and it's a nice day, or you're, the restaurants like the city hall in Downey, and, gee, what is it in here, 50 degrees, and so, it serves a good purpose to have a diversion, otherwise, I, if it wasn't for a city council meeting, I wouldn't hang around here, I definitely wouldn't hang around a restaurant that was as cold as this inside, so, it's a good idea to keep it outside, and, you know, baby killers, take your half minute back.
Herman.
Good evening, council members and mayors, David Divas, owner of LA Buns, first I want to thank you for the opportunity that has built these patios, you know, in such hard times, COVID and all, I liked the presentation Aldo gave, up until the point that he recommends removing the patios from Second Street, as you know, business has been very, very hard, and having these patios gives the opportunity to serve, you know, more people, because we're still limited capacity, you know, trying to keep people safe, one thing they feel to mention that these patios were built on Second Street on private property, and I believe, you know, Portos also has property there, right on Second Street, and they also built into that street, which made the street a little smaller, you know, and during COVID, and I'm sure all you remember, all you guys remember, that huge line that went around the block, miles, making that street into a, pretty much a one-way, and that cost us a lot of business, you know, we're already, you know, kind of in trouble getting the place going, and then, this traffic, they actually had Portos employees telling our customers that they couldn't pass through the street, because it was pretty much a one-way street, you know, so, now, I believe the president, he's also a manager for Portos, is asking us to remove these patios, which is helping right now a lot, and right now, I think it's bad timing to remove, maybe you should resee it again, maybe in a couple months, you know, and maybe next year, and maybe you make that decision then, as for trucks, have any parked there, I mean, it is private property, why does owners have to provide parking for these delivery trucks on, on Second Street, so, again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to have these patios, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, welcome.
Well, regarding the outside door, I mean, outdoor patio, regarding those businesses that would need at this time, definitely, it's a good choice for them to have, but not for the Downey to have a permanent, to have outdoor dining, unless it's the setup for, set up with the original purpose on that site, so, because that, K, I mean, K rail, or whatever that is, that is, I mean, city of Downey, one thing that I, I mean, what I feel with the Downey concern about beauty and the safety, so, the K rails and all this outside door dining, it is kind of temporary things, so it's, it's to make of, not good with the beauty, even though, also safety wise, they put the K rails, but it is not good for performance wise, especially in the Second Street on the, in Downey City, yeah, that's what I see.
Thank you.
I, I do have one more question, what's, what's his name?
Oh, is there anybody else that wants to, their motion to close public comment?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So, by the, so, by the Mayor Protam.
I do have another question, does the district have sufficient funds to pay for the bollards?
We don't have it in the budget, but we would have to budget it in.
So, is there any way that you can come with that?
Yeah, depending which way we go with it, we'd have to look what the options are, and then see how we budget it in.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And this question is to staff, is there a way to accommodate for LA Buns to still have their outdoor dining, and maybe just close off the parklets for Bastards and for Ola, since they already have parklets on Downey Avenue, because I feel like it's, it's more unfair for LA Buns, because they happen to not have a location off Downey Avenue, I feel like Bastards and Ola are okay, because they have their outdoor dining, but LA Buns doesn't have that option, so I want to see if it's okay to at least allow them to have it, and maybe allow for at least parking off of Second Street with respect to Bastards in front of that area, and also in front of Ola.
Sure, to be clear, so, staff wasn't advocating that position, we're, we're providing support to the district in regards to the future of the, the parklets on, on Second Street, I, I think David Divas did bring up a very good point, that I failed to mention, that that street is private, and so, I think we'd have to get our heads together and, and figure out how that plays into the, into the equation, and so, we'd have to talk to our, our public works department and our city attorney as to what purview we have over that section of, of Second Street, and that section that's private is on Second Street from Downey to New Street.
So, so the part where Ola's at, that section is technically on city property, because it's on the street, but then, the part in front of Bastards and the part in front of LA Buns is private.
That's correct.
Okay, can we, I'm sorry.
No, no, you can go.
Can we go back to the pictures really quick, especially for, for the Second Street stuff?
Right there.
Okay, yeah, so, okay, and then, okay, so there's no bollards in the one in front of Bastards, is that, or, or K rails or anything, there's, that's how they did it?
That's correct.
But, okay, there's K rail, there's K rails there, there's K rail, okay, okay, and then, maybe we should go down the list of kind of what they were suggesting, kind of add our things to it, so what was the, can we start with that list then? Yeah, okay, so. Are we okay with everything here for the most part?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I just want the, the business to stay on Second Street.
Yeah, let's see, let's see the next page, okay, so this is, okay, so, this is the K, so this is kind of dealing with the K rails and then the Second Street parklets, so, like, for me, like, if, if we're going to allow parklets on Second Street, it should be all or none, and, you know, because that's kind of fair, but then, I, I think, Madam Mayor Protam, you brought up a good point with the, the two of the three that already have something on Downey, and then they, so I, I see that, like, for, for, for LA Buns, they're in a tough spot, because, I mean, they're, it's a tiny shop to begin with, and then, you know, not having that access to, to the Second Street to, to be able to do their parklet easily, you know, they're, they're doing what they can, and, and, I, I mean, considering what, what's there, I mean, I think they've done a pretty good job, not necessarily, you know, you know, I, I think there's always things that we can work on to improve things, but I, I think for them, it'd be good to at least keep that.
Yes.
And then, as far as the K rails, like, on, on Second Street, are we okay with opening that up for the part that's not being used?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with opening that up, in respect to Bastards and Ola, to opening up that section, but I just feel like it's unfair for LA Buns, who doesn't have, they, they can't utilize Downey Avenue for themselves, so I, I feel like it's an, it's an unfair advantage for them, and they're just one voice.
And then, and then on, on Downey Avenue, like, in front of Masonic Lodge, in front of, like, second time around, and, and the northern part, are we okay with taking those?
I'm okay with it if it's, if it's, it's safe to do so, so I am okay with that.
Yeah, and I wanted to bring that in with as well, because we just, I, I actually saw it, there was someone that, that got hit in that corner of Downey where Ola is, so, even though we're having those, you know, our, all these measures about having the people safe, they're still having accidents in there, so, we're going to check out if, if there's any way to kind of slow down the, you know, miles in there, because they're running really pretty fast, I have seen it, and that's my district, so I've kind of been looking into that a lot, the other thing that I wanted to bring out, I know it's not in here, but the parking spot that it's in front of Portos and behind, which is ours, it's on Second Street.
You're talking about the parking structure?
Yes, the parking structure, so, we're having a lot of issues with that too, I already called it out, and I talked to Gilbert, but we're having this issue too, where there's a lot of robberies, breaking cars, so I don't know what can we do in that, in there, because it's affecting the businesses as well, because there's people who's coming from another cities, or even from here, and it has happened, but they're not willing to speak out and say, you know what, this is what's going on, but they call me, and we need to fix this issue as soon as possible, if that's possible, maybe have more security, maybe have cameras, have something, because we really need to get in top of this.
Sure, thank you for that, we do have a security company that patrols that, that parking structure, we'll get with them to see what the activity's been, we'll also partner with our police department to see what the calls for service have been in that structure, and we, we will make an effort to improve that.
Councilmember, if I can clarify, so are we talking about the city parking structure next to the movie theater, that's the one, okay?
Yes.
Because I wasn't, because I kind of got, because we're not, Porto's owns their parking structure, but, but we have our.
It's ours, yes.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I have heard a lot of stuff from there, even though the security guards have said that they're like overwhelmed, because they cannot be like in the three floors right away, because in the third floor, they do a lot of things that they shouldn't be doing in there, so I think it's kind of an improvement in there, we need to have more improvement in there, have more security, I don't know what can we do, but we definitely need to do something in there.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I, I think there's a motion, is there a motion?
So, I'll make the motion, so that.
The motion would be to accept one through five?
Items one through five, I think we're pretty much okay with, so dealing with item, yeah, just to clarify, so, yeah, that's fine, yeah, okay, so, item six, kind of dealing with that, I, I would still like to keep at least the, the, or have the K rails removed from, from the northern part of, of Downey Avenue, in a way that's safe to allow parking, but still protect the, the people that are there, so we'll need to keep like one to kind of keep them from that side, yeah, so the K rails to kind of protect the traffic coming in, and then, also for the, the Second Street, if we can, at least allow for, for LA Buns to keep theirs, I think the other ones kind of have the double ones, so we'll, we'll make them suffer with just one parklet as opposed to two, I guess, but, if we can at least allow LA Buns to keep their parklet, I think that's fair for, for most businesses.
Are we going to stay with the concrete?
With the, the K rails?
Yes.
We're going to attempt to do so, one of the challenges is, is the concrete K rails only come in certain sizes, and so, we haven't been able to find a size that's small enough for the existing parklets, parklets that'll remain on the east side of the street, and so, we might have to resort to water-filled parklets, but we're going to work with our public works department to see what our options are.
Okay, so I just wanted to amend, if there is any way that we're going to use any of those, smaller and larger, to have the subcommittee of art and, art and culture to be part of the, to paint all that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I'll make a second, two-shon's motion.
With, with the friendly amendment from Catherine.
To add the, the design, but more, okay, so I'll, I'll restate the motion, the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, except items, it's nine, nine items, all nine items, with number six being amended, is it number six, number six being amended to carve out and allow for the K rails to remain in front of LA Buns, to allow them for outdoor dining, with the friendly amendment, I don't know if that's correct wording, but, with also making it, trying to beautify it in some way, did I get that motion correct?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Okay, so, there's a first, a second, clarification?
We got it?
How about the duration, are you folks?
No, I thought we, I thought that was part of the first.
That's part of it, one through nine.
Yeah, I thought we were keeping it till.
Yeah, so everything is accepted, except for item six being modified.
But I do like the fact that you report back to us in June.
Same here.
Yeah, we need to bring this back, please.
Okay, so first, second, please vote.
The motion is approved with Mayor Frometta absent, and Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from the item.
Thank you, thank you, and I think now we could bring back Mario.
Now it's a time for non-agenda public comment, if a speaker engages in conduct that disrupts or interferes with the meeting, I will ask the city manager to have the speaker removed from the chambers until the end of the non-agenda public comment period, I remind speakers that the non-agenda public comment period will be limited to 30 minutes pursuant to Downey Municipal Code Section 2105G, City Clerk Duarte, have we received any written comments or correspondence regarding non-agenda public comment to be read into the record?
Mayor Protam, we don't have the written comments that were received, would you like me to read them, or would you like to receive and file?
Given the time, this, is there, let's, let's just receive and file.
Okay, and copies have been provided to the council, and they're in the back of the room for members of the public, and they will also be uploaded to Laserfish.
Thank you very much. Okay, welcome, Mr. Herman.
Well, Mayor Flaca, good evening.
Good evening.
So, in my hand is my petition to you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, as I read into the record, the First Amendment of Brandon Berg versus I in my new Ohio hat, under HHH, as I said in El Monte West Covina, I am still Mr. Dick, so I read into the record down there, to the insignificant jackasses of these small cities, I said, "How far is the nigger going to, yeah, oh, that is what we are going to do to the niggers, under US 395444, 1969." 1969 was a good year. A dirty nigga. Send the Jews back to Israel. Let's give them back to the dark garden. Save America, mommy Blanca Pacheco. Because you only got one chance. Live or die with that mask on or off. Dying in or dying out. Go outside and eat or go inside and eat. Either way, we're all gonna die, dummy. Then mommy, it goes on to say, oh, let's, let's, let's go back to the constitutional betterment. Well, what's constitutional betterment? You goddamn fools are putting down George Goscon for releasing people who have been victimized by the system, by these fucking judges and these fucking DAs and the fucking city attorneys who prosecute people for having disabilities, Ms. Alvarez. Thank you. And again, Ashton, an educator, in education, how many years? An L E S D fucked you over and you quit because you can't hang with the big boy.
Mr. Herman.
And again, as I said, this is my general public comment, non-agenda item, and I'm gonna voice my opinion, whether you like it or not. So chata. Go get your chata and chat up, lady. ¿Se entiende? No es cristiana. Por ciega, por tu miente, no entiende mis palabras de pendejo porque yo echo la palabra muy bien por pendejo, por los otros pendejos en esta vida de chingada. So let's see if they pass our budget Friday. If not, shut it down, Congress. Shut it down, Senate. Shut the house down and fuck you four.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
And I hold this sign up, remove John Lee. Yes, last meeting we had, it was the end of Sean Ashton's failure, failure as the president of the Association of Independent Cities. Let me put this behind me so people can see it on the tube. The Association of Independent Cities to get rid of John Lee. Well, perhaps maybe it's a conflict of interest. His sexual harassment passed. He was the chief deputy to Englander when we ended up paying $75,000, $75,000 of our taxpayer dollars to settle a claim because some skirt in the office got a bunch of dicks all riled up and they want some pussy from her. And she only put out for her lawyer boyfriend. And we put out $75,000 to settle the case. And then the whole irony, at the conference of the Association of Independent Cities, they talked about ethics, which before John Lee was Mitch Englander. And where is he now? Oh, he's in prison. We're breaking the law. And sexual harassment. And John Lee was the main deputy right under Englander who, who did nothing. So, you know, you got this naive guy who gives a prayer, some dumb, dumb goyim who thinks it will clean up our language. Well, if you think we're gonna clean up our language, you're whistling Dixie until you clean up that board. Whether Sean is president or president emeritus, I don't care. And after all, you want your gay pride flag. What about this flag, folks? After all, this is a flag too. And, oh, it's cold in here, so have to do something. Okay, brr. After all, let me, if you're gonna whistle Dixie, you need to know the song. I wish I was in Land of Cotton. Old times there have not forgot. Look away, look away, look away, Dixieland. In Dixieland where I was born, early on, frosty morning. Look away, look away, look away, Dixieland. Then I wish I was in Dixie. Hooray, hooray. In Dixieland, I'll take my stand to live and die in Dixie. Away, away, away down south in Dixie. Away, away, away down south in Dixie. Away, away, away down south in Dixie. I sure hope they fly this flag if they're gonna fly the gay pride flag in Downey. Thank you. Fuck you.
I'll start off by asking a simple question. Why is an idiot who calls our children fat and instigates an assault against another elected member still employed? Why is John Esquie still employed? Why is Catherine Alvarez not saying anything? I think you know one of his victims, you should say something about him. Earlier about that racist symbolism that you managed to send by voting on no, no confidence on George Goscon. Not only did you not provide any logic or reasonable argument, Sean, but you're continuing to perpetuate the colonialism against our community. I don't know how you identify, man, but you look pretty white from, from, from here. And my brown and black communities are being targeted by law enforcement, by racism in our institutions. And when someone comes and they start making changes, what do you do? You don't ban with the people who he had a majority support of. You ban with individual council chambers that are not the reflection of the community. As much as you want to think that, they are not the community. I also want to let you know, Catherine Alvarez, it was a clear no. It should have been an easy no vote. To abstain, like AOC did, for political reasons to avoid backlash, I want you to know that the first thing I did was message a bunch of progressives, put it on every chat, and I'm officially telling you right now, the gloves are off. She invited me to have coffee with her about a week ago. I got the messages, I'll make that accessible. She ended up recording me during that event on her phone. For what reason, I don't know. What's her motive? Who the fuck cares? But she recorded me. An elected member of this city recorded a constituent. I don't know what's wrong with you people. I don't know why you keep selling out, Catherine, but I am done with your crap. I'm not only waiting for your recall, I'm hoping that it comes sooner. And you should quit because you're crap. You're not a progressive.
Mr. Martinez.
You need to think about it because I'll sue you. So be quiet.
Mr. Martinez.
I'm going to let everyone know that you're a fraud. And you know you're a fraud. And if you keep pushing these racist symbolisms because a bunch of Republicans can't understand what their talking, where their talking points are coming from, you're just as bad as them. Because you're empowering that racism. Today, Sean, you empowered racism.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
I'm gonna keep my comment brief. I know that we're all super, super tired. Sean, I like you, man. You're the council member of my district. But I'm really upset that you voted for no confidence for George Goscon. I understand we all have reasons why, and some people believe in crime control versus due process, and that's okay. But Mario Trujillo, I wanted to thank you for voting against the vote of no confidence. I know that some people will say that you probably have some kind of preconceived biases, but there's a lot of people here, and I wish that they were still here, who denied the idea of systemic racism. And I apologize because I did laugh during that and I shouldn't have. But it shows, just proves to show that there's a lot of constituents that have a lot of learning to do. And I saw people attack you for, you know, doing your job, for being an attorney. To end my comment, just want to say thank you for doing the right thing, voting, you know, for Goscon. Thank you.
Hello again. I just wanted to address the issue about that parking structure, the public parking structure on Second Street and New Street. My business, as you know, is adjacent to that structure, and I've been there 18 years. And the last two years, I had never seen such lawlessness in that structure. The police are doing this best they can, they do a great job, but they can't be everywhere. So they have one security guard guarding that structure, and it's overwhelming to the poor security guard. Lately, there's been bottles thrown from the rooftop, almost hitting people inside of other parking structures. There's also been robberies. Just this Sunday, one of my employees got their, their laptop stolen. Also, it smells like pee, did I mention that? The whole thing smells like pee. And I understand that this, in October, it's gonna be some, a festival on the rooftop. So maybe you want to think about cleaning it up before then because that is, you know, our tax money, you know, pays for that parking structure. So I would like it cleaned up and a little bit more security if it's possible. But you're all doing a great job, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And maybe you can talk, David, maybe you could talk to Aldo and see what we can do or with PD to see what we can do about taking care of those concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for being here at our council meeting.
Mayor Protem, just to let you know, Councilman Alvarez brought those concerns up to me as well. We actually have, we actually have public works going out there a lot. And they do daily cleanings out there. Our security is out there. I'll talk to the PD and we'll, we'll look and see what we can do. Our biggest challenge is on the weekends. People are in drinking establishments and then they go back to their vehicle in the parking structure and they use the restroom there. And so every morning, we're there cleaning it out, doing it out. It's hard to keep up with it, even if, I mean, we had somebody there posted. So anyway, we'll, we'll look at it. I just want to let you know we're working on it. We do have people there every day, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have we cleaned the area already? Okay, you may proceed.
I speak to things. First of all, in continuation of last meeting, I present some numbers. Not for those who only believe what is being fed, but for those who seek the truth. Based on CDC, those under age 50 takes 5% of COVID-related deaths in the United States. I would not say only 5% because the individuals, family members, even friends are suffering from the loss as I am. I cannot present every single numbers from the USA and California data, but today, only for school aged students. Under age 18, among those who got positive, less than one person is died per 100,000 people, cases in California. If you compare with COVID vaccine adverse effect, not just side effect, side effects is more bigger than adverse effect. So adverse effect, mostly deaths and paralyzed. 36 people were affected per 100,000 people. So this is at least 36 times higher than COVID related death rate. Even CDC adverse reaction data is not, or as you might have been heard, as well that hospital does not report of all this adverse report, adverse reactions. Because this has been revealed through the, probably some of the people have watched through YouTube, that project Velitas. So it is your choice as a parent. If you want to give vaccines that has higher risk than COVID and the vaccine effective is fade away, as now White House press upon, try to persuade booster shots ridiculously. The second day, Down City needs to correct the meaning of the rainbow. As you use the LGBTQ, this rainbow is the sign of God's promise. So even I made thousands masks to stand against the incorrect meaning of the rainbow to restore the meaning of the rainbow, which is God's promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, is there a motion to close public comment?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
It's ordered by the Mayor Protem. Now is the time for consent calendar items.
Can I say something before we jump into that? I just want to clarify what Joy said.
Oh, it's okay, we don't believe him.
Yeah, I know, he, he already left, but I really need to have this on record. Two weeks ago, I was in Indian Wells. So if everyone knows, I was not even here. And I just wanted to have this statement in Spanish. So, because I know he's gonna go on YouTube and he's gonna see it. So it says like this. That will be, thank you.
Okay. Now is the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item? Okay, I will now open.
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from, city attorney, what item is it? I'm sorry?
Eleven.
Eleven. Thank you.
And that is because your residents? Item 11 is, item 11 is within, is within 500 feet of the commercial properties owned by Councilwoman Trujillo. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members of the, okay. City Clerk Duarte, have we received written correspondence regarding consent calendar items to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor Protem.
Members of the public wishing to address the council regarding consent calendar items only may now come forward and form a line. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please provide your name for the record. You may proceed. Has it been sanitized?
There's been a speaker, so.
It's been sanitized, correct?
Okay, Mike Greenspan, a brewing butt-kicking Florida gator. And in football, to you, UCLA chickens. Game contract, you lawyer.
Please stay on topic.
Okay. Now, now there's a couple of things. I see, obviously, Mr. Trujillo has some very lucrative tax shelters from his lawyering.
What's the item that you're discussing?
Well, the number 11, he had to excuse himself on. And I mean, he's been all night, Mr. Excuse. But that's, that's, that's no problem. I'm just saying about it. And let's go over a couple of things. First of all, the water system. Well, I noticed you were a little bit over budget, but not much. So you had a couple of unforeseen problems. But hey, at least it's not like the library. It's not taking forever and ever. It's actually getting done in a reasonable period of time, which for Downey, that's not bad. for Downey, that's not bad. Now, item nine, oh, good, $22,000 to Evan Brooks Associates Incorporated, to provide grant-writing services, more money for Downey. You know what that means? More money to embezzle. Don't just be Mr. Silva, or whoever's embezzling, let's bring everybody into the act, after all. And last week, you, they had a presentation for the 74th anniversary of our Air Force, and I see with Bill Hayman in the Air Force, no wonder we lost in Vietnam with jokers like him. And when the Marines had theirs in LA-
Which item are you on?
-anniversary.
Which item?
I'm comparing the Air Force presentation to a Marine presentation in another city, they had cake. Let them eat cake, as Marie Antoinette said. Well, next year, don't be so cheap, Air Force.
I don't see that item on the agenda.
It was in last week's presentations. That was the minutes, in case you lawyers don't know, the minutes are a part of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, don't be so cheap.
The minutes are the closed session special meeting, September 14.
It was the meeting two weeks ago.
The minutes on the agenda are referenced in the closed session.
It was on the agenda because it was a presentation. And the other thing, of course, it was the sayonara to Shaun Ashton as president of the Association of Independent Cities, capping off his year.
Excuse me, it's actually, you're incorrect, like our city attorney mentioned.
Hey, I'm talking. I have the floor. Speak afterward. It's very rude to interrupt.
It's rude not to be on topic.
I am on topic. The meeting minutes included a presentation, you dumb cunt.
It's more rude to us than we have to you by far.
Dude.
I love this.
Stay on topic. Okay, okay, mommy, I'll stay on topic as best as I can, because Mr. Assuni needs to apologize to Mr. Martinez, because he-
Which item are you discussing?
Well, I'm talking about the water system improvements, goddammit! File the notice of completion for capital improvement, project number 2034 Public Works. Mr. Assuni knows what the fuck I'm talking about, so apologize, you stupid niggers.
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Herman.
That's item five, mommy, accept the work. Chata. And then, what about item six, mommy? Mommy Pacheco, you need to apologize to Wayne Spiller about the repairs for District 3 of Ms. Alvarez, who said that the ADA improvements citywide, because jackass manager, Mr. Levas, only spent $22 million on ADA access for curbs, ramps, and sidewalks, and he's still not finished spending more money for disabled niggers and disabled people. Then, I'm gonna go to item number 11, because Mr. Trujillo likes little tiny muertos in his community off of Second Street in Civic Center, at Third Street, Mrs. Placa Checo, Mayor Bruja. Then I'm gonna go to item 10, Ms. Pacheco, and talk about the resolution for cons subito applicants for Measure A, as in funding for administration.
January 8, 2021.
Adopting resolution.
I have to record this shit, because I know I'm not losing my fucking mind.
Mr. Herman.
Fucking cunt.
Mr. Herman.
I'm talking to you about the fucking cunt grants from the Los Angeles Cunt County Regional Park cunts to open space cunt districts for Measure A. This way, projects and programs can be adopted and filed, and we can go there and shoot off our fucking rockets into the cunts, and on one side we'll have dicks, and the other side we have cunts, and we shoot into Downey a blanket of authority for these applicants to measure them out and submit the authorization, because Blanca the Mayor Pacheco is fucking crazy.
Mr. Herman.
She keeps telling me to stay on topic, I got one second. Bye!
Is there a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So ordered by the Mayor Portem. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
A second? Please vote.
Give me one second, Mayor Portem.
The consent calendar is approved with Mayor Frometa absent and Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from item number 11.
Thank you. It's been a long evening. City Manager Levas, do you have any comments?
Just really quick, I wanted to thank staff for putting out the, specifically John Osque, for getting the presentation of the paintings out there. I don't know if you all saw that for-
That was really nice coming in, and I actually had that for like 10, 15 minutes before.
Looks nice, and that was actually Catherine Alvarez's idea, so Catherine, thank you. And then, also, wanted to thank Aldo and his team for the housing fair. We had a lot of, a lot of agencies, was it last night, right? Last night, to answer questions from the public about various housing options, so thank you, Aldo, for putting that together. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. It's, like I said, it's been a long night, so we are now going to adjourn the meeting in memory of the Navy sailors who perished during a helicopter accident in the Pacific Ocean off of San Diego. Hospital corpsman, third class Bailey Tucker, 21. Hospital corpsman, second class Sarah Burns, 31. Naval aircrewman, second class James Birak, 21. Lieutenant Paul Fridley, 28. Lieutenant Bradley Foster, 29. And the lives lost due to COVID-19. A moment of silence. Meeting adjourned.